Good evening, everyone. Before we begin tonight's agenda, we would like to observe a moment of silence in memory of members of the CCSD family that we have recently lost. Mrs. Melanie Crumpton, James Allen Charter High School Media Specialist, and Mrs. Julie Wigley, School Counselor at Mulberry Middle School. Thank you. We extend our deepest condolences to those families and friends during their difficult time. We will call to order the June 9, 2025 Committee of the Whole Meeting. Is there a motion to adopt the agenda?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? Then we will move on to special recognition. Ms. Denny?
I'd like to welcome to the podium Ms. Sonia Jones to present the Sonia B. Jones McKinney Vento Scholarship.
Good evening. I am honored to introduce the first recipient of the Sonia B. Jones McKinney Vento Scholarship. This award is presented to a student experiencing many challenges, including homelessness. This year's recipient has demonstrated tremendous resilience. Her achievements in journey to higher education, marked by significant trials, have made her a deserving candidate. The winner will receive a one-time scholarship award of $500 sent to the college or university of her choice. Please join me in celebrating this outstanding student, Sophia Trio of West Ashley High School. Sophia, we are confident that you will continue to excel in your studies and positively impact your future. And we do have a certificate.
For Ms. Jones is seated, I'd like to acknowledge her for her tireless work in our office serving homeless students. It doesn't matter whether it's a Saturday at 8:00 a.m., a Sunday at 7:00 p.m., or 12:30 a.m. Mrs. Jones has served this district faithfully for decades. And Sonia, you do so with heart, enthusiasm, passion, and a commitment for kids who don't have what others do. So I want to thank you and acknowledge the hard work of you and your team. The name of this scholarship is befitting of your work serving children. So thank you.
And we, excuse me, we will go on to Item 3A, the superintendent's report.
And so that, before you leave, Mrs. Jones, just so that you know, we plan to match the $500 for our student. So we will match that if you'll make sure she knows that, okay? You all go ahead. Thank you. Thank you. Yes, ma'am, you're welcome. Thank you, trustees, and welcome summertime. It's good to see all of you here. We do have a rather lengthy report tonight, so I apologize for that in advance, but there are lots of good things to share and lots of opportunity for growth. We want to kick it off first and foremost with Slide 2, Stephen, and the celebration of graduates. If you haven't already seen this, I think it is some of the best work that Stephen, oh, excuse me, that Mike and Todd and the great team in their office that I have ever seen. So Mike Raven, I know you're looking down, so you don't have to look up at me down there at the end of the table. You're still pretending you don't see me, Mike? Mike, would you stand to be recognized? Mike and Todd, just do everything. And this is just an exceptional piece highlighting the nearly 4,000 graduates that you helped us celebrate, starting May 22. So Stephen, take it away. Give us just a minute. We've had some technical difficulties. Is there a way to get the volume up, Stephen?
First thing first, seniors, are y'all ready to graduate or what?
We've grown together through our experiences and our maturity. We've learned together through different lenses, and we've come together as we formed unbreakable bonds.
Through every late night, every early morning, every challenge we thought we couldn't get through, we made it.
This isn't just the end of our history. It's the beginning of the future we get to shape. When that starts with everything we already over become. So hold your head high and know that this moment is yours because you earned it.
We're graduating high school right now, not a couple years ago and not a few years in the future. Right now. We're only going to experience this once, so I encourage you all to take it in.
Christopher Xavier App.
Dylan.
John Asher Huggins.
I would not be here today without the love and encouragement of my parents, Jenny Velazquez and Hector Moradel, who left everything behind to give me the chance of a better life.
Go forward in your greatness, even if it's something you don't yet see. Go forward in excellence, knowing that who you are is all you have to be.
So go out into the world and pursue your dreams. Pursue what makes you who you are.
I am the first in my family out of seven siblings to graduate high school. This is just not a personal mindset, this is a legacy that me can't.
I'd like to share a part of my speech in Spanish as a tribute to all the Hispanic families here joining us today. Hoy se completa una nueva etapa y es un honor celebrarlo con todos ustedes. A todos los padres que tienen un hijo o una hija rodándose hoy, se deben de sentir llenos de alegría y orgullo por ellos porque lo hicimos.
This means something. You have done exceptional work, young men and women. Let's stand up and acknowledge the great work of the class of 2025. Stand up, mamas, stand up.
I do get a little rowdy, sorry.
Layla, Camia, Ramadi.
Do not lose your greatest strength, the quality which lives on in each and every one of you, uniqueness. Instead, take this gift into the future, letting it grow and develop as a result of every new experience you face.
Do not fear failure, y'all. Fear standing still. Fear never trying. Because failure is not the opposite of success. It's part of success.
So here's to the future, to the journey ahead, the memories made, and to never forgetting who we are right here and right now.
Be bold enough to go after something big and be strong enough to keep going, even when things get harder.
So make the most of the present moment and don't be afraid of the future. Let everything you've become help you reach your life goals and don't forget to find your joy in the process.
Sometimes you have to encourage yourself. Sometimes you have to speak victory during the test. The enemy created walls, but remember giants do fall.
My mom has always been my rock, always reminded me to keep going for no matter how hard things got. Her support alongside the love and encouragement of my family is a big reason I'm standing here today.
I look at all of you right now and see the extraordinary within you, and I hope that right now you can see it too. Class of 2025, the world is waiting. Life won't be easy, but if there's one thing I know, we got this.
By the power vested in me.
By the state of South Carolina.
And the Charleston County School District.
I hereby certify that these candidates.
Have satisfied the requirements. For graduation.
It is my hearty recommendation that they be accepted as duly qualified.
And are now high school graduates.
I now confirm you as high school graduates.
At this time to symbolize your transition from high school student to lifelong learner.
Turn those tassels.
For high school graduates.
Isn't that great? Don't you want to watch it over and over again? I made my whole family watch it more than once. It was just exceptional. I just, Todd, you and Mike did such a great job, but most importantly, it's critical to acknowledge the hard work of the nearly 3,700 educators in this district who make that possible. And that's why you do what you do. So thank you as well. We'll go on now, Stephen. Back to the presentation. I do want to acknowledge while we're going on to the next slide, Dr. Colleen Knower, who leads a lot of that work in our high school learning community with Dr. Applesheimer and Mr. Comeback. It's a long three days, as you know. Mr. Grabowski especially, I think he shook every hand nearly this year. So we thank all of you for being there. Everyone was represented at least one, if not two ceremonies. So thank you. So we are going to quickly overview what we can about the year. A lot of the data that we have, that we have is embargoed. Some data we don't quite have in yet. Most of our SC Ready data. We have some preliminary numbers, but nothing that we can share. We are going to share some projections with you tonight, though, clearly based on the board goals, which, as you know, target groups of students, if not the goal itself, interim goals related to the goals, particularly around African-American and Hispanic students. Goal one being literacy, Black and Hispanic 5th grade students reading on grade level. An increase of that over the course of five years. Algebra readiness. This goal includes not only proficiency with algebra, but also opportunity to take. So the denominator being all 8th grade students. And goal three, college and career readiness. I can't wait to share some of this with you. Again, preliminarily, and we'll share what we can. Many things are still embargoed. Go ahead to the next slide. I know you're going to ask, so we went ahead right up front and front-loaded you, how is the district accomplishing gains? And here are some of the things our teams have acknowledged. Ms. Simmons, Dr. Clamp, our Associate Superintendent, Drs. Williams, Epp, Swearingen, and Mrs. Haynes. We have consistent goals. I want to thank this board for adopting those goals and remaining consistent with the goals. We find that when we shift the focus in districts, it takes us off of the path, and we believe that some of the success that we're experiencing is due to the consistency in goals over the course of the last three years. Was serving as deputy superintendent at the time. It was a very difficult process, but we finally were able to achieve some consensus around goals that matter for kids. An accountability framework whereby everyone in the system is held accountable, starting with the superintendent. As you know, your adoption of my evaluation is based on the goals that the board has established, and that trickles down to the chiefs, to Ms. Simmons, to Dr. Clamp, to the associates, and then it trickles down to principals and their work with teachers and student learning objectives. So an accountability framework is incredibly important to system success. Weighted student funding, we're going to show you, Ms. McKinney. You asked last and Ms. Watley about results linked to the WSF. We think we have some preliminary projections for you tonight. Again, they're not final until we get the summative data, which will come late summer, early fall, but we're going to share with you some projections. High-quality curriculum. You recently adopted that in the math curriculum you did last year with the ELA curriculum, excuse me, with CKLA. The strong student and family support that Dr. Siobhan Coakley has led. I just want to acknowledge her. Just last weekend, Ms. Lieber, I think you were present. There were literally hundreds of people celebrating consistent attendance out in North Charleston. The support that she, North Charleston, West Ashley, I'm sorry, Dr. Coakley, you offer so much, it's hard for me to keep up. But just on Saturday, she was there with hundreds of folks acknowledging stellar attendance. Early childhood programs led by Ms. Kim Foxworth and her team. We believe that early intervention is key to student success. Ms. Bailey, you know from your time in our elementary schools and our pre-K programs how important that is here. Tier professional learning that's really been led by our associates, Mrs. Simmons, Dr. Clamp, around high-quality curriculum and rigorous instruction. And thanks to you, board, we believe when people feel valued about their work, they tend to rise to high expectations. So the increased teacher salaries Mr. Brigman has suggested has really allowed us to recruit and retain some of the finest. Compared to last year this time, Mr. Brigman, and I know that we filled all of our vacancies last year before day one, we have a significant decrease in vacancies, correct? Last year it was about 200 and some, and now it's 86.
We normally go into the 1st of June with about 300 classroom vacancies. We actually, rolling into the 1st of June, we were at about 73.
Oh, did better than I even said.
Yeah, and a lot of difficult to fill special ed and other positions have been filled. So we are ecstatic. The recruiters can't thank you all enough.
Thank you. So we believe these things are contributing to the work in our classrooms elevating achievement. We'll go on to the next slide, Preston. So the overwhelming goal is about kids leaving elementary school ready. There's a lot of controversy whether we should have measured grade three or grade five. Again, really no need for controversy. We acknowledge that best practice is to begin tracking this as early as kindergarten. And the first time it's measured is in grade three, so it was important to establish metrics before kids left grade five. You'll notice here that over time, Mike, do we have a microphone? Oh, Mr. Ryanbacher. So you'll notice here. So you'll notice here. Thank you, Mr. Ryanbacher. You'll notice here over time that, so this is the state of South Carolina and how it performs, that all students reading on grade level by grade five, that we are actually in Charleston significantly above that. But if we grow as much as I Ready, which is our formative test that suggested we should grow this year, we will, over the course of two years, see nearly a 20% increase in student proficiency in regards to reading. And I really want to thank these folks, Michelle, Luke, for leading the way because this really deserves its own round of applause. So I'm going to stop and we're going to applaud because this is quite great work. Ms. Roberson, can you hear us? Because some of your schools have seen what we believe to be some significant increases. Can you hear us, Ms. Roberson?
Yes, I can.
And our thoughts and prayers are with you as you care for your loved one there. But if we continue to grow, if we reach this benchmark here, we have a lot to celebrate. And right now, we have some pretty significant data that suggests our 3rd grade students will, there'll be a 10% decline in the number of students that do not meet in our approaching meeting if those numbers hold fast. But again, that's embargoed, so I'm not looking too closely at Ms. Roberts because she issues citations rather regularly to me. This chart is fairly confusing, but for the public, I want to make sure that, board, you understand the great work going on in schools across the district. So last year in South Carolina, these were the top seven rated districts in regards to student achievement. And so I want you to see that Charleston, drawn right here, is seventh highest ELA results in the state with a population of five times the largest district closest to it. So these schools right here around this yellow dot are schools like Charleston in regards to demographics. But as you can see, Charleston is performing higher than all of these schools with nearly a 50% poverty rate with five times the number of students as our friends over in Anderson One. So again, significant work here in ELA grades 3 through 8. You'll see a similar trend in math, Preston. We'll go on to the next slide. And what I want to make sure you understand is that we still have a gap in Charleston that's defined by race. It's more defined by poverty, though. So whereas I'm going to break this down by race for you, I'm going to transition to poverty, special ed, and multilingual for most of this presentation because we've identified that as the key reasons our students are falling behind. But over time, you'll see a decrease in the gap performance between white students and Black students. And in many of either your goals or your interim goals, this is how you measure progress. If we achieve where we're projected on SC Ready ELA, you'll see here that students are projected, again, to increase more with another decrease in the gap between the performance of students. And ladies and gentlemen of the public and board, these are the facts. These are the numbers. We'll go on to the next slide, Preston. Similarly, in grades 3 through 8, so goal one was literacy, goal two is algebra. You'll see here that if projected in grades 3 through 8 from 2022 to 2024, if where we're projected lands true, we'll see nearly an 8% increase in students' achievement in mathematics. So we do consider that a formidable increase. As you know, our curriculum changes next year, so we'll have a lot of work to do around that. I want to thank the teams that are meeting. There was a team that met just today with me about MTSS, our multi-tiered systems of support, to make sure we have things in place. But if projections land true, these are where the projections were the last two years, you'll see, here's our projection. Here's where we landed actually this year above, or 2022, a little above projection, 2023, a little below projection. So if we land close to this, we will continue to exceed performance around goal two, which is related to math readiness. Likewise, in grades 3 through 8, I want to be very clear. Lots of work to do. There's a gap. The gap is defined by race. The gap is defined by poverty. Are we making progress fast enough? Every principal in the district would tell you, we can't make progress fast enough. But we're closing the gap. You're seeing increases in student achievement and a decrease in the gap between the performance of white and Black students. And if you see here, although she was totally against putting these things on the chart, Mrs. Roberts finally agreed late Saturday evening to add here where our projections are in regards to math. Again, seeing a decrease in the gap and an increase in the achievement of students. We'll go on to the next slide. Similarly here, you'll see this scatter plot that I don't really like because all these things scare me. I wasn't a math person. But you'll see here again that Charleston ranks seventh highest math results in the state. Again, with an enrollment of nearly five times its closest competitor. Not that our friends, we ever compete. We just healthily go back and forth. But you'll see that districts like ours are performing below us. And again, lots to celebrate here, Preston. So overall, it's important for you to know that the hard numbers up till today show decreases in all three areas, particularly in college and career readiness, which we'll hit on in a second. A 10% decrease in literacy, seven in algebra, and nearly 30% in college career readiness with increases in achievement at all levels. Again, for the record and for the public, will we be satisfied till every child is reading on grade level by grade three? No. And will we be satisfied until we graduate every student ready? No. But we're working. In public, we need your help to do that because it takes a lot of wraparound supports to accomplish what we've been able to accomplish, thankfully with the leadership of great people represented here in this room today. Preston, to the next slide. You'll see here we began breaking things down by WSF with the top line being all students here. This represents, you might say, well, Anita, we talked about grades 3 through 8, but not Algebra I and not English II. This actually. This actually represents high school achievement in Algebra One and English Two. And it breaks it down by WSF. So you'll see that we're decreasing that opportunity gap, again, between all students. And look at here at this top line with pupils in poverty. They're getting close, closer and closer. We have seen declines in recent years, my job's to be transparent with the data. We have seen declines with ML population. But based on our projections, Buffy's included here, we do expect in Algebra One and English that all of these groups, pupils in poverty and special ed students, will continue to increase. We are concerned about MLs a bit here. They could show another decline or flat line, but we'll wait till that final data comes in to present that. But again, really strong work in our high schools. Dr. Epp, Mr. Gordon, and Mr. Comeback lead that work. Preston, Goal Three for you, as we look at the end of the year, is around college and career readiness. In the last two years, we've seen a significant number of students leaving the system ready, meaning they scored a three or better on an AP exam, they completed a pathway, they scored a certain percentage on the ASVAB. They're a completer in one of our Centers for Advanced Studies. We expect that in 2025, we're going to come really close to that number. We believe that once we have this year's data, that we're going to be close to, I shouldn't say this, but close to 85% of students college and career ready. And I want it's really a tribute to the work that Rich does. They go student by student in every high school in this district to make sure they've identified a pathway. Is that college for everybody? No. It's not because they choose that. It might be military-ready, right, Mr. Barroway? It could be workforce-ready, demonstrating an ability to communicate, collaborate, or think clearly. But we're really, really, really optimistic about these results. And some of our highest need schools have seen some of our most significant increases. Mrs. Roberson, the last time I talked to Mr. Joyner, he was bragging that he will be at, I think, 100% of students that he recently graduated, which, as you know, is a testament for the work at St. John's High School. Mr. Darby also seeing significant increases at North Charleston High. Preston, next slide. I'm sorry, Ms. Roberts, I'm intentionally not looking at you. You'll see here some ways that kids get to college and career readiness, and this is exceptional for our system. At the end of the year, we have nearly 1,500 CTE completers, meaning they've completed a pathway for technical education and support in one of our Centers for Advanced Studies or in partnership with their high school. We have, that's 305 more completers since last year. You'll see work-based learning, 300 more students completed work-based learning this year for a total of 453. That's a 40-hour approved internship. And then dual-credit courses, again, 312 more students within three years this year have completed a dual-credit pathway. And these are one of three ways students can become college and career ready. And as we wrap up and we get AP results and dual-credit results, we'll share more of those things with you. Preston, next slide. You'll see here again, as we suggested earlier, a decrease, again, in the gap between white students and their black and Hispanic peers in regards to graduating the system ready for whatever life has next for them. We believe a lot of new things that Rich and Sherry and Ryan are leading, and our high school principals are leading or contributing to readiness for students. Again, will all students leave and be ready or interested in writing a dissertation? No, they won't. But they should be able to read and function so that they could be successful. We've partnered with the Chamber Metro of Commerce and our local mayors to ensure opportunities and career exploration, job shadowing, youth apprenticeships. Summer camps are going on right now, enrichment programs, military prep, including ASVAB preparation, and virtual job shadowing with microbursts that offer all sorts of opportunities in this exceptional world of AI we have now. Preston. We've also created a lot of new partnerships. We'll soon launch the cohort of Health Science at the Early College. We had over 100 or nearly right at 100 applicants for 20 seats. We shared that. We never could have dreamt that that would have been as successful as it was. Again, a testament to the hard work of a lot of people in this room. Elevate Charleston, Mr. Brigman and his team offering opportunities for teaching internships. Again, we just graduated the first cohort group at the Scholars Academy. We've launched a co-teaching partnership, as you know, with Clemson, which we've expanded. We've also expanded the CSU partnership. You heard it first. We will soon launch exciting new opportunities at Stoll and North Charleston High School, specifically related to dual-credit opportunities for those students. Mentorship programs with CSU, Boeing, Meeting Street Scholarships, which will be celebrated this weekend. We hope you can attend. And we are more and more engaged with the Charleston Metro Chamber of Commerce. Accountability is really important. It's one of the things we featured on Slide Three. How do we make sure we're all in the same boat and rowing the same way? We might have all different paddles because there's different ways to get there, but you have to believe and row in the same way. And so we do a lot of district and school-based problem solving. Our associates are involved in really strategic database principal evaluations. We walk through our classrooms and see what we see. We compare what we're seeing in classrooms in regards to standards and rigor. We do several fun-filled days of student data reviews. I know you're all looking forward to that for the fall already. And then we do a lot of strategic planning. You'll see Marguerite Rosa here in her time with principals talking about budget and return on investment and how we ensure that our budget priorities are linked to true student outcomes. And Mrs. McKinney, at the request of you and several other Board members, particularly Mrs. Watley, the Audit and Finance, as we talked just last time, about weighted student funding and how it's linked to student outcomes. You'll see here that we've included measurements in what we project. And this first slide is about grades three through eight, English Language Arts. We do anticipate a either decline here at the very top or a flat line for all students. But we see here, especially with our pupils in poverty, which, as you know, you allocated funds for this. We do expect an increase here. We expect an increase with our MLs, excuse me, our special ed. We are watching very closely this ML group. We saw a decline last year. We suspect that we may see a decline based on projections, but that will all depend on, as you know, not all students depended upon their access and their readiness score will be counted in these final numbers. So we hesitated to put this up, but we did because we know you're anxious to see it. If you look at math, though, on the next slide, Preston, you'll see we expect increases and a narrowing of the opportunity and access gap for pupils in poverty. You see a significant increase with MLs here. And we are projected to see another increase with special needs, which is again a testament to Sherry Bell and the work her team have done. Again, really excited about that. Very quickly, we're not going to play this because I know I'm well over my allotted time, although I don't really have an allotted time. I know I'm well over it. We're doing a lot to make sure we're supporting families because the most critical thing is that kids are in school, ready to learn on the very first day, if not before. So we're hosting playground pop-ups on playgrounds, which is a first for this district. I want to thank Dr. Coakley, Ms. Michelle Mills, Ms. Denny and their teams. Every Tuesday over in Park Circle, we go and we set up computers and we have a lot of fun with folks. You can watch the video at your leisure. And the next slide here is, we already have almost 50% of students registered, which never happens in this district. We're really excited about that. We've got other school registration pop-ups planned with Dr. Coakley and her team, again, who hosted a wonderful session over the weekend. You'll see photos pictured here of some of the pop-ups they've already led. And Preston, I think you'll see some photos from the Second Annual Outstanding Attendance Celebration from just this weekend. We want to thank you, Ms. Lieber, for being there. We had nearly 2,000 students who met the goal of 93% attendance or higher. Anything else, Preston? I think that's the last one. So we're committed. We're committed to doing the right thing. And if you're watching tonight via Zoom, I hope you are. We need your help. With that, I'll turn it back over to you, Mr. Grabowski.
We will thank you for such thoroughness and honesty, transparency, and putting it all out there and for crediting those behind you and that we are looking at for helping us close those gaps.
Well, thank you, Ms. McKinney. I really should be seated behind them. And I want to thank Mrs. Roberts, who worked tirelessly pulling the most recent numbers as late as today, just to make sure we were as honest and as transparent as we could be with the most up-to-date information. I thank the Board for your patience with us. So thank you. I'm open to any questions you might have. We will start with Ms. Roberson. Do you have any follow-up questions?
Thank you. Ms. Huckins, thank you for that detailed report. This is always my favorite month as a recovering school counselor. This is the time of year that we see all the results for the hard work that's been put in throughout the nine months. So thank you and your team. I only have one question. The schools that are very close to reaching their CCR goals, are they putting sustainability plans in place? And what is your team doing to help them put these sustainability plans in place?
That is a fantastic question. Mr. Gordon, Mrs. Roberson, as you know from your time as a counselor, which you could always be one again, come out of recovery and join us. But Mr. Gordon just talked to me a little bit about this today. In fact, he is working with high school principals through the first of next week, at which point we have to report this final data. But Mr. Gordon, can you give us a 60-second? How are we sustaining this work in our schools? And what are our plans to make sure that schools that have a challenge, quite frankly, meeting these numbers, are able to do so year after year?
Yes, ma'am. Thank you so much. Well, thank you, Board, for your support. It was critical when we started this journey several years back to focus on college and career readiness. So without that initiative and that willingness to really take this challenge on, we wouldn't be where we were at. And then next, I cannot say enough about the CCR maximization teams that we have at each one of our high schools. So a couple of years back, we established a cohort of adults in the building, administrators, school counselors, assistant principals, teachers, career specialists, and others throughout the district. And we literally go row by row, kid by kid, right down the roster. This student is a CTE completer. This student earned three or higher on the AP exam. This student is already engaged in a 40-hour work-based learning internship. This student is scheduled for the ASVAB next month. This student is in their second dual-enrollment course. And if they earn a C, they'll be college-ready. Let's check up on that student and make sure that they're doing well and they're doing their homework and they're taking notes. And without fail, each one of our schools and those adults and those leaders are able to identify kid by kid who they are, what they're doing, and how to get there. It takes a purposeful and intentional laser-like focus. And our schools are doing it, Ms. Roberson, and for the rest of the Board. And you can go around and talk to all of them about how we meet regularly and we update our data systems and we work with counselors and work with teachers. And Ms. Huckins, that's how we're going to get over the line. You know, we've been getting better at it every year. I think the best is yet to come.
Thank you, Mr. Gordon. I trust that's the case. I appreciate you so much. It really is quite a strategy. And it's really about finding kids where they are through the IGP process. You know, it starts in middle school, Ms. Roberson, right? And figuring out the pathway for them to be the most ready. Again, everybody's pathway is different and that's nothing to be ashamed about. I have three children of my own and they're all very different, very different. I hope that answered your question.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Jewitt?
I guess I only have one question as well. You know, I don't want to look too much at test scores because testing is always hard.
It is.
But we are now coming into being one of the highest-paid districts in the Southeast. And our results are showing pretty low for the state. As far as, I mean, seventh district in the state. I would hope that we're trying to move that up.
So how many districts are in South Carolina, Ms. Roberts?
Sorry, I shouldn't have said low. In comparison, we're-
Seven, how many? 72 districts? So can we go to Slide? So, Mrs. Jewitt, I know where you're going with this and you're right-
We're still high, but we're not high enough, in my opinion, if we're going to be.
I understand. So if you'll go to Slide Seven, Preston. If you're able, can you pull that back up? So there are 72 districts in South Carolina. And I understand when you pay, you want, it'll take it just a second probably to get up. Yep, take your time. You're good. So I understand. I appreciate your comment. And our goal is to be number one. But more importantly than being number one, our goal is to make sure all 52,000 of our children are reading on grade level by the time they leave. So I want the Board to know that I am very proud of the seventh, that we're the seventh highest achieving district in reading and math with 72 other districts in South Carolina, especially with an enrollment of 10 times the closest. Mike, you got that? It's going to be Slide Seven, I think. Thank you. So I think if you look right here, that might not be it. Let me just help you find it. Keep going, my friend. There you go. Yep, that's it. So see right here, Mrs. Jewitt? So I don't do very well at describing these and that could have contributed to some confusion. Ms. Buffy does better than I do. But again, there are 72, 82, excuse me, thank you, 82 districts in South Carolina. And we're number seven. So these are the only districts that perform higher than us. And they have enrollments of 4,000 students, three, or let's just say, let's round up. 5,000 students, 3,000 students, 9,000 students, 11,000, 1,500, and 2,700. And we are at 51,000, nearly, let's just say round down, 50,000 students. So number seven out of 82 is strong from my perspective. But we still have a lot of work to do. Until we're all the way over here, well, we're never going to be. We're always going to be somewhere around here. But until we're all the way at the top, I won't be satisfied and neither should you. I think you're spot on on that, Mrs. Jewitt.
Thanks for clarifying all that.
Absolutely. Those are really hard and I don't always explain them very well. So thank you for your grace and giving me some space. But you're right, with increased pay particularly, and that's one thing Marguerite Rosa talked to us when she came to Charleston. We would expect that we're investing this amount of money, not only in pay, Ms. Jewitt, but also in professional learning and employee daycare for some of our folks, in extra planning time. And I think that's exactly your point, that with those sorts of acknowledgements in pay and resources, we want to be the highest achieving in the state. And I don't disagree with that at all. And I'm fairly competitive. So I'm hopeful we'll get there soon. Well, hope's not a strategy. I'm planning on us to get there really soon and so are the people beside me. So thank you.
Mr. Hollenshed?
Not really much. It's impressive in a broad perspective. I'm just curious, like from my district, I know Mary, not Mary Ford, Shakora has made some gains in that perspective. But like Morningside, for example, I know you made some, but not the gains that you wanted. How do you feel the way the student form and the changes? And what would be addressed in schools like that? Because a lot of that's transitional students and gentrification that transpires within that area. So how do we address that?
It's a great question, Mr. Hollenshed, and thank you for always bringing it back to the school level. We, I do believe, based on projections, we'll see some increases at Shakora. I believe we'll see some at Morningside, too. But I don't think any principal would tell you that they're satisfied until all students are where they need to be. We expect that Wanda, for example, will increase achievement at every EOC, which is unheard of. But particularly around the WSF, Morningside will work with Dr. Williams, the principal, the newly-appointed principal, when that person is named, will work closely with Dr. Williams to really drill down in that data and find out what the student needs. And some of that, Mr. Hollenshed, may be wraparound supports due to the transient nature of those students and where they currently live and then being displayed. So their WSF, how they utilize it there will look differently even than it does at Zucker, two and a half miles down the road. two and a half miles down the road. And so, we do expect gains there, but modest gains. And we'll work closely to make sure that we've identified the root cause, and then what resources we believe can best meet the mark for the most students. Ms. Simmons and I talked about that just today with Mrs. Allison, is Mrs. Allison's whose birthday is here today, and I tried to get her to leave. "Ms. Allison, you should leave. It's your birthday." But we talked just about that--
We can adjourn so she can leave.
No, listen, I make a motion. But we talked about, you know, making sure that we have systems in place to track interventions that are successful so that we know it's a system, what works and what doesn't with certain populations. So, I can't specifically tell you what we'll be doing at Morningside because it'll all be based on the data and the demographics when we finally get the final numbers in. But know that that's exactly what we're doing, is going school by school, group by group.
So, you made significant changes, for example, in the great strides at North Charleston High, going from 50 students to 100 graduates this year. What was the formula behind that and the intervention and work that was placed there?
A lot of different strategies are happening at North Charleston, Mr. Hollenshed. I thank you for calling that out. Mr. Darby's done a lot of good work. Some of that involves high-dose tutoring, offering of wraparound supports, pull-out intervention, push-in co-teaching models. They have added resources there to make sure that they have enough people co-teaching with teachers to support kids. Overall, I will say, though, that Principal Darby has done an exceptional job. And it took a year or two or three of just creating a culture of expectations for students there. And that takes time. It takes strategy, and it takes relationships. And Mr. Darby has done exceptionally well in the community building those relationships. The enrollment over the course of his tenure at North Charleston over seven years, the enrollment of students has doubled. And we've not rezoned that school, meaning more people are comfortable sending their kids to North Charleston High School than ever have been before. So, it's a combination of culture, respect, high expectations, and expectations for learning, and then very clear push-in and pull-out support along with high-dose tutoring and ability to wrap around kids. I think Mr. Darby, if he was here, would still say, "Hey, we got a long way to go, but we're making progress." And if you remember from your work with Cognia, your goal and our goal is continuous improvement, continuous improvement. And I can say without a doubt that he has led that work at North Charleston High School. Thank you for the question.
Ms. Watley?
I just have a couple of quick things on, let's see, which slide am I on?
Okay, Preston, you ready? Okay.
It's the college and career readiness slide. I believe it's 16.
Thank you, Ms. Watley. Is that where you're showing the decrease of the gap, Ms. Watley?
Well, yes.
Go ahead. Yes, yes.
I'm looking down and was waiting--
No worries.
For the audible cue. So, my question is fairly simple. On the percentiles, underneath the percentiles, what are the ratios? What's the interpretation of the ratios?
It's a great question. Ms. Roberts, as I misled Ms. Jewitt in some of the bubbles, will you, let me get you the microphone. My God, you're right here. Then you can pass it to Mr. Douglas. We'll call him on you next.
So, what the numbers represent, this is basically the cohort of students, like 9GR 21 and then 9GR 20. So, it's the four-year cohort, right? So, the denominator is representative of the students who are within that cohort. And then the numerator would be those students who actually met one of those college and career readiness indicators that I've shared with the board before. Does that make sense?
It does make sense. I understand it now.
That cohort stuff can get a little confusing for me, so just for the record--
Well, as long as we know what they're symbolic of.
Absolutely. Good question, Ms. Watley. Anything else?
Yes, ma'am. Then the other thing, I'm going to slide forward to the weighted student formula.
Yes, ma'am.
I'm just curious, what the rubric was that you set up to calculate to get your projections?
That's a great question. So, Preston, on slide 20, this slide is, we actually used actual I-ready data, Ms. Watley, to gather the projections. So, on slides 20 and 21, so that's actual formative data and projected proficiency from this year's spring I-ready. So, we'll see how we land when the actual numbers come out.
After the embargo.
After--
It's actually I-ready and map data--
Excuse me, all the form--
Our students, sorry.
That's good. I'm glad you clarified.
Because different groups of students take different tests, right? But we use the projections from both of those assessments in order to be able to come up with that number.
And so, we don't yet have the final results, Ms. Watley, for grades three through eight reading. All we have is a preliminary on grade three reading. And then, we don't, we have some preliminary numbers on math, but we don't have the final SC-ready data. We won't get that till late summer, but as soon as we can share it. But that's why we're sharing the projections, because we know you're anxious to know. So, we do anticipate that the district will continue to improve once the numbers come back.
So, I really like that, especially since the timeframe that you've selected, we've sat on the board.
Yes, ma'am.
And I appreciate you acknowledging the work that we've done and the decisions that we've made that have empowered the district to get the kids where they are. Just one thing that I would like to see, right now, we can see recovery from COVID, where COVID took our kids down, and now we've brought them back up. But one thing that I would like to see is perhaps a starting point prior to COVID, where they were. Because I know now we've caught them back up, but I also know that we're above where they were before COVID.
So, that is a really great point, two things. So, we have those numbers. I think we've shared them. But for purposes of this, we limited, but the district is scoring higher than it ever has before, even pre-COVID. And we're the top-scoring urban district in the nation on post-COVID recovery.
And that's per Harvard, Stanford, and Dartmouth.
Correct. So, I want to make sure that I do, for the public and for the press, acknowledge that this board has thought more about equity, improving conditions for teachers. I give credit to this board because you've passed budgets that directly impact teacher pay, administrator pay, and most importantly, how we service kids, so that you're willing to go out on a limb and trust that a $34 million investment is worth it, says a lot about your commitment to kids. And so that without the data, you are willing to do it again, and up the amount that we allocated is really a testament to this board's work. You've also done things like approved funds for employee daycare and reduced rates for teachers, and more direct resources to athletic facilities and schools. You've put more money back in schools than I've historically seen. So, this board is owed credit for establishing a vision and leading.
So, what I also see in this is how we implemented the new curriculum, which was hard, going, you know, so many shifts. But we now have a good curriculum that's rigorous, and also the letters program and the professional learning communities, as well as, I remember last year, Mr. Grabowski especially pointing out the need to focus on math and algebra. So, I'm glad to see this data, and I'm honored. And I've considered it a privilege to have been a part of getting the district to where we are, just from a decision-making place. But I'm really glad that we now have a team that's really focused on this and getting this done.
And again, I want to make sure the public knows, no one sitting at this table or behind me or working at school is saying, "The work's done." And, "Oh, we're successful, so we're going to stop." That's not what we're saying. We're saying the district has done a lot of work. Teachers have worked really hard. Principals have led strategically. You all have allocated, and we're making solid progress towards getting more kids ready. That we are seventh is really quite remarkable, to be honest. We're the second-largest district in South Carolina.
Especially considering the diversity of our district compared to, say, Fort Mill.
We are the most diverse district in South Carolina, the second-largest and the most diverse. Thank you, Ms. Watley.
Thank you, ma'am.
Mr. Grabowski?
What a great segue into diversity. To put this all in proper perspective, when I look at your numbers, I mean, the one thing I'm missing is, and I guess after attending every graduation, I highly recommend to my fellow board members that they really attend your district, but do get out and visit some of these, because that's when you realize how diverse we really are. You look at Stoll right now.
Wasn't it amazing?
But what's interesting is, what I'm not hearing is the growth in the ML population.
Right. So, if you look at, Preston, can you go? You took it down, and there we are. So, what we do anticipate is-- We almost did turn it off. That's okay. Okay. So, the ML numbers are, go back one, Preston, if you don't mind, sir. The ML numbers are always a little tricky when you even consider not sharing them because certain students, depending upon their language acquisition level, won't count in the state results. Okay? So, what we have seen last year was a decline in ML, student populate, what we saw, an increase in MLs, a significant increase in MLs. And, Mr. Grabowski, we saw a significant increase in MLs mid-year and two months before the test. And so, we tracked those attendance patterns, and we think that had something to do with it. But regardless, we're still held accountable. So, we have seen sort of a flatlining here and a decline of MLs. And we expect, in reading, we may consider to see that, which is something we'll work really closely with our principals on. If you look at the next slide, though, we do anticipate an increase in the performance to even higher than they were last year, a year before. So, we do expect 27.6% of MLs, and that would put them higher than they were two years ago. We won't know until we get the numbers. But we have, of these groups, we're making significant progress with pupils in poverty and special ed students, which the district has not necessarily experienced before. But MLs remains a group of students that we have to focus on as a system.
Well, the reason I want it highlighted and brought to the attention, especially to the public, is, you know, students in poverty, we're probably talking about students that have been in the district for a longer period of time. The problem or the challenge I see that you have, and I really haven't heard how we're going to address this in data collection, is with MLs, this is a state of fluctuation. This is students that come one year, two years, three years. These are not students that have been here from our first grade, second, third--
That's correct.
--to eighth. And so, when I see the numbers dipping on MLs to me, and then I go to Stoll and then St. John's, which I thought was the most diverse school out of all of our schools. I mean, and then you take into account, are we taking, I mean, I think we have the largest number of charter schools out of all districts.
We do. We do.
So, we take every student, charter schools get to pick whoever they want, private schools, whoever we want to pay to go there. But we have this obligation to take whoever we have to. And this large number of ML students are coming in. I just, I really want, you know, somehow that we can get this, you know, out to the public, the challenge that we are faced with on the ML subject. It's not really a deduction or numbers going down. It's more of a fluctuation rather than a long-term goal.
It's a challenge. Two years ago, the district set at 4,459 MLs. At the end of this year, we set at 5,791. And they weren't necessarily the same MLs, as you noticed. So, we have identified some of the challenges, and we're trying to mitigate to the greatest extent that we can. But we acknowledge it's a challenge. If there are people out there that can help us, we welcome them. We want, we need all the people. This year, we hired 40 bilingual TAs mid-year because we said, "We've got a problem, and we've got to figure out a way to fix it." And our principals attribute, and Dr. Rush is here, I think, that's why we've opened the International Welcome Center. And we've, you know, the newcomer center and the International Welcome Center. That's why you've seen so much of our efforts. In my next board update, I'll send you May's data for the International Welcome Center. Dr. Rush forwarded it to Michelle and me today. It's just telling. And so, we know it's an issue. It's on our radar. We don't pretend we're mastering it. If there are people out there who can help, we welcome them. We really, really do. We want all the help we can get, Mr. Grabowski. Thank you for acknowledging that it's a challenge. I'm sorry, Buffy.
Oh, no. I applaud staff. And, you know, I'm going to get on Darby because those students need to be walking across the street because that is the most incredibly underutilized, you know, asset that we have. I know how well it works at Wando. I know how well it works at, you know, West Ashley. But we really got to start pushing those students to walk across the street.
What they have done at North Charleston High and Stoll this year, and Military Magnet, quite frankly, is Rich and Ryan have worked with that, and Sherry have worked with the high school principals on scheduling very strategically this year. So, you're going to see an increase in the number of students across the board. I can't wait to share that with you. But we'll wait till master scheduling is done, because I want to give you firm numbers. You're going to see it across the board. It was an internal goal that we had, and I'm really proud that there were some barriers in North Charleston and barriers in West Ashley for which we've mitigated. And we believe we'll see higher numbers. We know we'll see higher numbers in both places. Right, Mr. Gordon?
Would you have a spot for it, if I spend some time with you?
Thank you, Mr. Grabowski, for the questions. Ms. Lieber?
Thank you. First of all, when I ran for office, I didn't know I'd be, I'm going to start to cry again. I'd be so honored to actually go to a lot of graduations, and I'm envious that our chairman took that opportunity. It was such a wonderful experience. The video was beautiful. And then, my relationship building with my staff was--
Wasn't it great?
My staff, the staff.
We were glad to have you, Ms. Lieber. We were glad to have all of you. It really is what we work for.
Yeah. So, just wonderful. And, Mr. Gordon, with your CCR, I love it. This is a wonderful opportunity, and I like the CCR team. So, wonderful. And I, sorry. And I just want to share with some experiences that I have, you know, with, you know, understanding why we don't have 100% literacy. And I was really excited to hear about the reading buddies and the science of reading and how it's been implemented here. And that just is a rewarding experience to note that the district is truly going in the right direction.
You know, we were one of the first districts in the state to really embrace the science of reading as the model for teaching reading. And we had Dr. Carrie Wright at the time. I was serving as a deputy superintendent. Michelle was the CAO. And Dr. Carrie Wright really led that work in Mississippi, and it's turned around Mississippi. And she consulted with us and helped support a lot of the work. We were one of the first districts in the state, if not the first, to really, as, I don't know if Mr. Grabowski said it earlier or Ms. Watley, roll out letters training for all of our teachers and ask them all to attend. And we paid them to attend. We offered them stipends. And so, we attribute a lot of the success around literacy to the focus on the science of reading.
Yeah, that's fantastic. And I am, at some point, interested in the new member center that caught my attention.
Absolutely. I'll put that down for Dr. Rush to follow up with you on. And that's all I have. Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Lieber. Ms. Bailey?
I don't want to cry. I'm not a crier, but I'm going to tell you.
I've cried a few times in the last week. If you cry, it's all right.
Me and my husband have six daughters, three that graduated from North Charleston High School and three that graduated from RB Stone. And when I went to seven of the graduations, and I think my district five was the most diverse and multicultural--
Yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am.
And when I tell you what I experienced, it was like my own kids. And I had people that I know who kids graduated that those kids made me so proud.
Yes, ma'am.
And I'm going to read this, slide 25, again, slide 25. CCSD is committed to preparing students for future success and providing opportunities to gain the skills needed for employment and self-sufficiency. to gain the skills needed for employment and self-sufficiency, often leveraging strong partnerships with local businesses and workforce development agencies. When I tell you when I stood on that stage, when I looked out across the Performing Arts Center as well as the Coliseum, you have surely fulfilled your commitment to these kids across Charleston County. And people don't even understand or have a clue about the time and the effort that Charleston County School District, your cabinet, yourself spends in getting these kids ready for the workforce, ready for college, ready for the military. Y'all just don't know. You just, people just don't know. But I commend you, every last one of you in here, for your support for every family in Charleston County School District. And it all boils down to this, how bad do you want it? When I listened to these valedictorians and when I listened to these salutatorians and these other kids that spoke, it was all in how bad do you want it? Now, I looked across RB Stoll, and these kids, some of them didn't have a clue about English. And they made it. They did it because it was about how bad do you want it? That young lady that spoke that was, what, one sibling of seven?
Yes, ma'am.
All she screamed when she spoke was how bad do you want it? We can sit here and talk about black, white, Hispanic, or whatever, but I'm going to tell you like this here, it's all in how bad do you want it? And we have kids that want it. They want to succeed. They want to make their families proud. So let's get it done.
Thank you, Ms. Bailey. And we appreciate you being there for a majority of them as well. We're not perfect, but we're really trying hard, Ms. Bailey. And we need as much help as people are willing to offer. So thank you for your leadership.
And if we could ask that the clock is moved so the trustees can see it, I know that it will help. Thank you. Dr. Temple.
For me? No, it, I heard the beep and I thought, well, where is that coming from?
Dr. Temple, you, at least you usually have prepared statements, so.
I don't have a prepared statement tonight. So I just want to say, you know, it's so impressive to see the work that everyone is doing and to see the dedication that all of us are showing. This board is showing, you all are showing, the schools are showing, parents, to really address the fact that our students can learn and we can help. And I see that we're doing, you know, that intensive kind of work that needs to be done. My doctoral work was on the achievement gap, and I was able to work with teachers to do action research, and they could close the gap. And I put that out there. I hope that we will have teachers who will take on some of that work with the leadership and their professional development. Because I see, as I work with teacher leaders at the College of Charleston, that they are doing that action research, and it, you can close the gap in your classroom.
Yes, you can.
And then we will see it across the county. And I just want to say, this week I went to a forum, and one thing I heard and something that I value, and I want to put it out there because I want you as a district to look at it, and that is, what can we do to become community schools? Because the community school concept is the way we wrap around children. We look at that bell-shaped curve and we see the bottom, but we tease out what the cause, what the root causes are, as you said. So thank you for all that you're doing. Thank you to the board. I think we have a lot to be proud of.
A lot to be proud of. And Dr. Temple, I appreciate that. You know, our commitment is to make sure, and I met with, out in Mrs. Roberson's district was one of the schools I visited this week, and we talked about just that Wednesday evening, about the desire to make sure every neighborhood school in every district is somewhere that its parents will celebrate sending their children. And the root cause is, it looks different depending upon where kids are in school. There are some similar challenges for which we have to mitigate, but there are certainly certain different ones as well. As Mr. Holland should have mentioned, you've got gentrification and a transient population in some, more so than others. And in some, you have to worry about kids coming to school being fed and not as much in others. But we're certainly committed to ensuring all of our schools are fortified and ready to serve the kids in their neighborhoods. So thank you for that. Thank you, Ms. McKenney.
Thank you. We will go on to item 4A, and the next three items will be handled by the liaisons and the staff that they work with. Ms. Lieber.
I'll go ahead and give the interim guardrails on climate.
Yes. Thank you, Ms. Lieber. So we, good evening, trustees. We prepared a really succinct board monitoring report on interim guardrail five, climate, which is connected to assessing, monitoring the overall perception of climate in the learning environment. And so this work resides in Student Support Services under the leadership of Lisa Allison. And I'm going to toss it to her to walk through a couple of slides with you.
Thank you, Ms. Simmons. And thank you, Board of Trustees, for the opportunity to provide an update on board guardrail number five, which is the teaching and non-teaching staff perceptions of social and learning climate of the school. And so thinking of guardrail as something that protects something, so thinking of safe and supportive learning environments as the thing that protects our student learning in our schools and our academic success that we've just had the opportunity to hear from Ms. Huggins. So as for, as a reminder, we use our, yes, ma'am? Yes?
That's all I have.
Yeah, same.
That's it? Go click on, just go for the count.
Yeah, I guess the rest of the presentation didn't make it to the board.
It's just the first one.
I'm not sure how that happened. Our apologies. The item was posted, but the, it looks, Ms. Trudy, like only the first slide got uploaded. So we will make sure you have a copy of this presentation. There are the four slides in all, I think, Ms. Allison, is that correct?
Yes.
So we'll go through them carefully, but we'll make sure that you have the presentation so that you can review it and ask us any follow-up questions you have. Our apologies on that. Go ahead, Ms. Allison, that wasn't, that was an issue with me, just.
Is there any way that I can help? Can I broadcast anything?
No, no, no.
Talk through it.
You talk through it and we'll get it printed for the trustees before they leave.
Yes, ma'am. Okay. So we measured this guardrail through the Panorama Survey, which is administered two times a year as a way to measure it. Our baselines were established in the spring of 2022, and the five-year goal was set to increase 10 percentage points in a favorable response pattern from school climate for both teaching and non-teaching staff by the spring of 2027. So just for clarification, our teaching staff is obviously our teachers. Our non-teaching staff can include our administrators, school counselors, teacher assistants, student concern specialists, and other itinerant staff who are assigned to schools. These data reflect the responses from 3,169 of our teaching staff and 1,958 of our non-teaching staff. And that's a response rate of 90%. So it's a good, it's a good response rate. So this spring, the district's percentage of non-teaching school-based staff who responded favorably regarding perceptions of learning climate in the school was 73%. That is up two points from last spring and is the highest percentage of favorable responses in this topic since we have measured them, and that was the spring of 2021. The district's percentage of teaching school-based staff who responded favorably regarding perceptions of overall social and learning climate of the school was 71%, and that is up five points from last spring. And it is also the highest percentage of favorable responses since the survey has been administered. So lots of cause for celebration tonight. When you get the rest of the slides, you, oh, well, there they are. How about that?
I think they already may be in your email. But go ahead, Ms. Bailey.
Okay. Well, on this slide, you will see the pattern of responses across time. For our non-teaching staff, we wanted to provide some examples of questions that the staff received. So we included two of the more favorably endorsed questions here. So when asked, to what extent are staff trusted to work in the way that they think is best? 81% responded favorably. And then when asked, overall, how positive is the working environment at your school? 74% responded favorably. Again, both are up from last year. So we're seeing improvement in, even at the question level. On the next slide, we will switch to our teaching staff, and you can see the pattern there. Again, it's the highest it's ever been. And when asked, to what extent are teachers trusted to work in the way that they think is best? 75% responded favorably. And when asked, how optimistic are you that your school will improve in the future? 74 responded favorably. And again, both of these questions have shown gains since the last administration. So when we zoom back out and think about that five-year goal trajectory of 10 percentage points in favorable responses, you can see that we are well above our spring 2025 target. In fact, for our teaching staff, we are double digits above our target. So when we look to the next slide, we acknowledge that overall climate perceptions of our teaching and non-teaching staff are very positive. However, there's always room to grow. So we've outlined some areas of opportunity for growth and some strategies to address those areas. There are some open-ended questions in the survey that helped guide some of these recommendations as well as just the overall pattern and response to the questions. So when we look at trends in our data, we see similar patterns between our teaching and non-teaching staff. So our recommendation is that we treat all of our staff in our school as a whole entity. So these recommendations and strategies would apply to the entire faculty of a school. So based on the response to the question, how positive are the attitudes of your colleagues and how positive is the working environment? We identified some strategies such as opportunities for connection between adults. That could include some positive staff team building and responsive staff listening sessions when there are concerns. And then based on the question, on most days, how enthusiastic are the students at being at school? We are recommending strategies designed to strengthen relationships and provide safe and supportive environments, such as encouraging student voice, providing opportunity for student voice. And that could be from our student groups, our student council, student ambassadors. I think we all know that when we ask students what they want and need, they will tell us. So providing those opportunities is important. In response to the question, what new initiatives, I'm sorry, when new initiatives to improve teaching are presented at your school, how supportive are your colleagues? We recommend, based on the responses, continued protection of planning time and professional development that is tailored and aligned to specific school needs and teacher needs. So as Ms. Simmons said, this work does rely in our office as far as administering the survey, but the establishment of positive school climate is all of our work. And so just appreciative of all of the work, the support of the associates, the support of the principals and their school teams for continuing to help our adults see their and reinforce their environments as positive because that is reflected in what our students feel about school as well. And so our office does remain available to all schools as they look at their school-specific data and do an analysis on areas that they want to celebrate and areas that they would like some support with. So thank you for your time.
All right. Thank you. That looks wonderful. All questions to Ms. Roberson.
Thank you. Ms. Allison, is panorama a standard survey? Or do you populate the questions that you want to ask the schools in the district?
That's a, that's a great question. So it's actually a hybrid. So panorama has a number of different topics available to districts. So the panorama survey that is administered in our district has topics with a prescribed set of questions. So we do not alter the questions within a topic, but we could choose to include or not include certain topics.
Okay. Is, is social and learning different from social emotional learning? Can you hear me?
I can hear you. I'm thinking about that question. It's, I would argue that they're all part of the same context and construct of feeling safe, feeling supported, feeling connected, having skills that are equipped students and staff to navigate challenges. And so it's all part of the same construct of a positive learning environment. When we talk about the questions, I think I gave you some examples of the staff questions. And you can see that they're really designed around perceptions of feeling supported and feeling connected, which is all part of social emotional.
Is there, is there a category that's titled SEL in the panorama?
No, no, ma'am, there is not. So our categories involve well-being, involve supportive relationships, involve school climate, self-management for our students, teacher-student supportive relationships. And I provide all of those to you. I may have missed a few in my memory here.
We'll make a list, Ms. Roberson, and send it in the board brief this week. I'm making a note of it now.
Okay, thank you. And my final question, like, actually, I was going to ask, what do you do with the information? But you came back and you, you answered that, and you talked about the opportunities for growth and the strategies. So then I will ask the question, when, when do you provide those opportunities for growth? Do they happen for teachers doing PLCs? Or do they happen for students? When do you provide these opportunities for growth?
That's a great question. So first, reflecting on the data is the first piece. So understanding how these data match the efforts that the school staff is already taking. Because we're all trying to provide a safe and supportive environment for our staff and our students. So looking at these perceptions and the context of that is critical. Evaluating what's already been done, has it been successful? Has it yielded the results we want to see? And then thinking about the planning for next year. So we are so excited over the next two days. We have, Ms. Huggins mentioned, our MTSS framework is a high-leverage strategy for supporting students and staff. And so for the next two days, we have very intensive planning and support for our schools. And these are the types of topics that will come up during that time. How are we supporting our students academically, socially, emotionally, behaviorally? And how are we also providing opportunities for our staff to feel that way as well?
I guess maybe, and this will be my final question, do you work alongside HR? What I'm getting at is that if you see that, you know, the school climate, it's not, because the numbers, they're in the 70%. So obviously, there are some low numbers in there that's keeping it from going above 73% of whatever that number was. So what we don't want is for staff to be moving from school to school, building to building. So I'm trying to find out how, you know, the opportunities for growth. When do they, when do, when does principals get this information and how do they use it? And what I'm getting at is that if we are switching principals, how do you make sure that a new principal get that information so that they could use it to their advantage? Ms. Roberson?
Lisa, may I?
Yes, please.
We typically work through the associates, Ms. Roberson. So this assessment, this survey is administered twice a year, so they have the opportunity to get baseline information at the top of the school year, make some decisions about strategy, and then we administer it again. Nine times out of 10, we're seeing improvements. And so it works similar to the interim assessments we share, iReady, as well as our FastBridge. This we see is another indicator of success in a building. And so we really depend on school principals to leverage these strategies in their building. It may take the course of a retreat for a school team. It may be work happening during faculty meetings, but we really do entrust the school principals with this. And so typically, when reached to employee relations or human resources, we are usually able to satisfy the concerns within the building, leveraging the supports from Lisa Allison's team.
That was perfect, Ms. Simmons. Ms. Roberson, your questions are, you could tell you've been in a school before, and even those of you who've been in business know, if you don't manage the climate in your building or in your, your business or wherever you are, that impedes progress. Like, while ago, we were talking about North Charleston High School. And we believe that climate is And, and we believe that climate is critical. And some of your interim goals and guardrails deal with climate. It's critical to student success. And so Ms. Roberson, like Michelle said, our associates monitor this closely. Last week or two weeks ago, Dr. Temple contacted us with a concern about her area. And the first place Dr. Swearingen went was the Panorama data. And so we keep an eye on these things. And when we see patterns in, in feedback and behavior, that's when Bill and his team sometimes step in and they help support. And now we always do think of other factors, like if a new principal is coming in and is changing things. We don't always expect that data is going to be positive in that, in that first iteration. But we do expect continuous improvement, even with school climate. And, and in the case of Dr. Temple, you know, the Panorama data was on in the ninety-some percentile. And, and so we were able to address a few things and, and make sure we were solid on our footing there. But it is something that, like Ms. Simmons says, we monitor regularly, because this is critically important to student success. If, if teachers, you know, don't feel supported, they don't necessarily have to like their principal, but they need to feel supported in the work, right? And that's, again, something that's attributable to student success. And I think that most of our associates include the Panorama data, Mrs. Roberson, as part of the principal evaluation PDEP process in regards to establishing goals for higher attainment in subsequent years. I won't say everyone, but it is typically a focal, a focal point of our evaluations.
Okay, thank you.
Do you have anything more, Ms. Roberson?
No, I don't. Thank you.
All right, we'll start off to the left. Then Dr. Temple, do you have any questions?
Great, thank you so much for your report. I'm wondering, in the Panorama survey, is there anything in the survey that would address the impact of restorative practices on school climate?
Like I mentioned, some of the topics include supportive relationships. And on the student support side, on the student response side, our responses around supportive relationships are some of the highest we have seen. So it's really exciting. So we look at some of the, at the topic level when it has to do with relationships, which is at the heart of restorative practices, relationship-centered learning. And then we can even look at some of the items to see, and schools are doing that. They have identified Panorama indicators as one of the goals around implementation of restorative practices. So they are tracking that, as Ms. Simmons said. We have the fall, we have the spring, we do the work in between. And how have we seen improvement in those perceptions over time with the implementation of things like restorative practices?
Great, and are you able to see, relate the, the relationship information to the level of implementation of restorative practices in this, in the school? How far along are they in terms of implementing?
We have, that is a great question. So when we look at our data, we are looking at different levels of implementation of restorative practices and looking at some of our outcomes. And we have not run that data for this year, so I don't want to speak to that. But in the pattern of years prior, where we have seen greater implementation of relationship-centered learning, including restorative practices, we have seen higher perceptions of relation, supportive relationships on the Panorama survey.
Thank you.
Yes.
Ms. Bailey?
I have two questions. When you look at the data as a whole, how do you deal with the negative responses on the surveys? And do these staff, teachers, students feel like they have a protected voice?
So when we look at the opportunities for voice, I think that's the critical part of what you just said there. So looking at the pattern of responses, and do we have a structured way to hear from our adults? Do we have a structured way to hear from our students when we have any concern? Whether they be on this survey or just in general. And so thinking about the responses from Ms. Simmons and Ms. Huggins and the support of the associates and how they're looking at those data, our team is available to help support for a staff listening session. We've done that regularly. And administrators can choose to be there or not be there. Many of them choose not to be there so that their staff can feel open to express concerns that they might have. And our administrators, I always appreciate that willingness to do that, to receive that feedback, and then design a plan that may address some of those areas that have come up. So that is a regular part of our support in our department.
Okay, I just, I asked that question because I know some teachers, and they express concerns about certain things. And they don't feel like their voices are being heard or they're afraid to say something. So I just want to make sure that when they do take these surveys, that they're able to entrust the district with what's in their heart and what's going on in the schools that they're working.
Ms. Bailey, I think your question aligns with Ms. Roberson's. And to Superintendent Huggins' point, typically, we're able to manage it with the help of associate superintendents, principals. If it's severe, dire, we have a serious issue because we've seen patterns, that's when Mr. Brigham's team may go in and do a really anonymous-type listening opportunity where they can get feedback. And those are also used to create plans for principals. And that's the truth of it. If, if principals need to be on some type of improvement plan, that's an opportunity there as well. We don't see it as a deficit. We don't see it as a problem. We see it as an area of growth and opportunity. And so typically, this data allows us to mitigate and manage before it gets too far gone. But there have been a time or two where we've had to resort to support from HR.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman?
Yeah, I always struggle when you bring up data that gives you a number and then you assume, you don't assume, but it looks like it could be applied to all schools. And we all know that, you know, profound leadership has the greatest impact on school climate. So from what I'm hearing, correct me if I'm wrong, we are using this data, which is, right now, we're only talking about staff. We're not talking about students, it's just staff, right?
Correct.
We are using it for targeted coaching?
Correct, yes.
And that's where the retroactive plans are coming up. Because I mean, after visiting with so many principals this year, I mean, I feel like I go into a lot of schools and I wouldn't expect twenty-five percent to issue a negative. I mean, these principals are good. So I just, I really question, this is why I don't like numbers like this at all, because when you say twenty-five percent and assume a negative, I, I feel hard-pressed. I bet you I can go into ten, twelve schools and say it's, you know, ninety-five, ninety-eight percent happy. And I just want to make sure we are using that, that this more for the targeted coaching to correct this problem, because I really am impressed with our principals.
It's a great, it's a great point. What is so important for the board to understand and what we have to do in our work is make sure that we use multiple factors when we're assessing the readiness of our principals, whether that's in regards to student achievement, whether that's in regards to staff morale. It could be a cadre of things. So we don't use any one thing to say, you got to go on a plan, right? And we understand that perceptions fluctuate for various reasons. It could be that the students, the teachers are mad with me. And so, you know, for whatever, and so the results are something else. So, so we never use just one data point. It's almost like going to your doctor and they use a variety of, of tests or they use a physical exam and blood work to determine where you are. We use a variety of factors. And, and it's important to note that even on this, Mr. Grabowski, we've, I'm proud that we're sort of beyond even where we established the goal. So you make a great point, but we use it for coaching, a coaching data and to set goals with principals and to work with them. And as Ms. Simmons noted, it's been rare, but we have identified, use this data, and I can look at Dr. Swearingen because I know she does this very regularly. Sometimes we have noted a pattern in, in something. And in working with the principal, we were able to improve that area. And inevitably, that improved kids' performance. So we don't use one thing exclusively.
Yeah, and I just, I think it's key, especially for any principals that may have heard what I just said. What I'm really more concerned about is that we're using this data to evaluate, but more importantly, to provide the support. Because especially after spending a lot of time with staff, I know how much you talk about going into choosing your principals. But more importantly, if we're coaching them, we need to be supporting them. So if there is an issue.
Absolutely. The goal, Mr. Grabowski, very well stated. The goal of this administration, and I think of many superintendents and principals across the district or across the state, is really one to support folks. I mean, that is our goal, to get people to where they want to be, where they need to be, et cetera. This is more of a formative tool, just like we talked about with student achievement earlier. iReady is the formative. It kind of tells us how kids are growing. And then the summative is SE Ready and of course. So the formative for administrators is Panorama. The summative is more of the PDEP. And so this is a growth tool that helps us establish goals to support principals along, along the way. Great point, great point. I'm glad you made it. So principals watching know that, that that's our goal, is to support them.
And to add on to Superintendent Huggins really quickly, PDEP stands for the Program for Assisting, Developing and Evaluating Principal Performance. So the whole instrument is designed to support Mr. Grabowski.
Ms. Simmons, thank you.
Ms. McKinney?
So I would assume that the more important data that you receive is by schools individually. And looking at this big number is looking at the big number. And to Mr. Grabowski's point, we, eighty-two schools?
Close, yes ma'am.
We've got a lot of different scores to look at so that you can pinpoint support.
That's exactly right. Well, well said. Thank you, Ms. McKinney.
Ms. Watley?
Thank you, Ms. Lieber. My preference would be to thoughtfully consider the presentation. And, and should I have some questions that my cohorts didn't, haven't already covered? I'll ask offline.
Thank you, Ms. Watley. I'm sorry, again, it wasn't up, the whole thing, was it uploaded?
Not a problem at all. I mean, obviously, the, the best is to ask in the public forum. But I, I just want to thoroughly look over and see if maybe I see something that my cohorts didn't see. I'll ask offline. Thank you.
Mr. Hollenshed?
No questions, good presentation.
Ms. Chuet?
I wrote two questions, but I was scribbling and I don't really. I'll follow up.
Thank you, Ms. Chuet.
Well, I'll, I'll take this. So I've actually administered a number, number of surveys, and I can tell you, it's hard. And I've taken a lot of surveys using the military and corporate America. And often, I often found that sometimes they would use words like leadership or management, and it would be very, not very easy to figure out what they were talking about. So it was, I don't know if Panorama has like a reasoning response to any of, of the questions or, like, how do you like say, oh, that question number three kind of needs to be revised a little bit, because it's not really getting to the point? If you can answer to some of that?
I can tell you that the survey is calibrated. There are statistics for reliability and validity that underlie the survey. And so, and there are norms represented with the ratings. But beyond that, we don't have a measure of, like, either complexity, if, if I think maybe that's what you're asking about the questions?
Maybe it's understandability of.
Understandability.
Yeah, yeah, it's like, like, are you talking about the principal? Are you talking about the assistant principal? Are you talking about the superintendent? You know, it did, I, I found sometimes the nuance with some of these, that it's misguided based on the structure where that person sits in the organization. And then.
Identify their role when they take the survey.
They do.
It just sometimes, is it, is it complex enough to analyze, you know, who they're talking specifically about?
We'll, we'll look into it, Ms. Lee.
Yes.
And so a good point, so we'll look into it and make sure that there's clarity around the questioning. I, I think it's identified, but we'll just make sure and we'll let, we'll follow up with you.
Yeah, and also having done some other surveys, sometimes it's the timeliness of them and the memory lapse, or they're willing to, like, wanting to go, go into an uncomfortable experience. And so is there another outlet for the staff to use to help? When those situations occur?
Yes, I appreciate that so much, because we all know it's not one just point in time. You know, on any given day, we can feel a certain way about a, a situation or context or the environment that you're in. So as Ms. Huggins said, multiple data points are critical. And so looking at the, providing the opportunity for the survey is one. Provide, I know administrators provide multiple opportunities for their staff to provide feedback. To Ms. Bailey's point, that voice is so important. So how do we regularly hear from our staff about their working conditions? How are we responding to those? Those are all really good points. And so we would want to make sure that all of those sources are utilized when taking any strategies to address.
I, I guess the, the last kind of question is, and I'm just thinking about like what I hear. I would say that planning period is probably on the top of their list in, in what they need. And then you always hear like, you know, teachers leaving the profession because of student behaviors. So is that, is that seem to be the predo of any sort of uncomfortableness in the staff? I don't, I don't, I guess what I'm, maybe I need to see the presentation again, but I just, like, what's really kind of like some bottom-line issues that are being recommended or struggled, still struggling with?
We did, there are open-ended questions. We did pull out the, the highest responses when we developed our strategies. So you're right on. That plant, protected planning time and that personalized professional development were things that really rose to the surface. Were student behaviors mentioned in there? Absolutely. And so we're always working to support our teachers and our staff and our administrators on all the areas.
Okay, I guess, any last-minute comments? And I, I think it was a wonderful job, so if you.
Thank you. Thank you for the birthday gift.
Good night, Allison.
Good night.
Stop making us look bad.
All right, I'll pass this on to our chairman.
Ms. Watley?
Audit and Finance. Thank you, Ms. McKinney. For Audit and Finance, we had a very light agenda compared to the, what it's been the last few months. And I must say, it's very nice having the budget behind us in June. A couple of things, we had two action items, fixed cost of ownership in the capital program. Phase of, color. On the fixed cost of ownership, give me one second. This is primarily for the Baptist Hill School to separate the on-campus middle and high school. And then on the capital programs, we've got a number of schools that need the, the replacement of their HVAC systems. And then we have some other maintenance needs to the other school. And then another item of interest would be the CCSD internal audit report. It was fairly straightforward. There's a couple of items that were found in the audit that had recommendations. The district's already taken action to correct that and then to report back the corrections that were implemented, as well as a plan moving forward with that. It wasn't anything too concerning. Another item that, to highlight, would be the purchases of contracts greater than two fifty. And then we had our, our monthly capital projects report, as well as our monthly financial report. And I'll turn it over to Mr. Prentice if he has anything else he wants to add.
No further comments. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Ms. McKay?
Thank you. Mr. Hollenshed, six A.
Okay, thank you. Well, we have a number of items to take action on, then we have one operation. So we're going to start with the policy BBAA. The motion to repeal, the constituent board, legal status. So I want to entertain the motion for that.
So moved.
Oh, second.
Second. Okay, any questions? Okay, any questions? Almost signify by saying aye.
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 And then there's a, they group together in Group A. The, which I don't think there's any discussion for, sir? I'm sorry, I can't.
Consent agenda.
The motion passed.
To the consent agenda.
Yeah, to the consent agenda. We're on to the.
Six B.
Six B, which is the Group A policies of A A, B B, B B A, B C A, B D, B G, B G D, B I E, E F A, B L C, D D A, D I, G I E, G B E, B G E A, G C F, G C K A A, G C K A A A, G K, G C K B A, and C G C Q B and I E. So those motions are grouped together. Do we have a?
I'll make a motion to advance the Group A policies to the June twenty-third, twenty twenty-five board meeting for consideration to approve for the first reading.
Oh, second.
Motion made in second, almost signify by saying aye.
Aye.
It's passing the move to consent agenda. And then we have, which is difficult, Group C. And Group C has some components of.
Group B.
No, we did Group B.
No, no, this is item six C, the Group B policies.
Yeah, sixteen would be. Policy B. The policies are A E F B, I H B H B, J C F, J F A A, J F A B C, J F A B C A, J K and J K E. And Mr. Chairman, I think Mrs. Temple has.
First, I'd like to make a motion to advance Group B policies to the June twenty-third, twenty twenty-five board meeting for consideration to approve for the first reading.
Oh, second. Now, Ms. Temple.
No, no, don't.
Dr. Temple?
I'd like to amend that motion. And so my amendment is I'd like to make a motion to pull J F A A, J K E and J K for our discussion tonight. Would you repeat those letters one more time? Yes, ma'am, it's J F A A, J K E and J K.
I second.
And and just so we're we're clear, I mean, I I think under Robert's rules, unfortunately, when you make a motion, you second it. We didn't go into discussion. So now we are allowing the amendment.
She's asking for a friendly, she's asking for a friendly amendment, which you are the one that says yes or no that you'll accept her.
I'll accept your friendly amendment. Yeah, now we can discuss.
Dr. Temple?
Okay, I can lead the discussion. As someone who has served on a constituent board for seven years alongside constituent boards, I know the value of our constituent boards. And what I want to address is a concern I have in the policy. In the past, when the constituent board heard a discipline case, that discipline case could be appealed and the appeal would go directly to the county board. The concern I have here is that in the proposal, we have the discipline case going to a hearing panel. I don't have any concerns about the hearing panel. I'm glad that the hearing panel has two, will have two people who are really knowledgeable about discipline cases and that we have a community representative. But I do have concerns that when the hearing panel makes its decision, it can be appealed. And I have no objections to the people who serve in this department. But I think that having an appeal go to the Office of Investigation and Compliance is is making this whole appeal process too long. When parents and kids are going through the process, we hope that when they meet with the hearing panel as they met with the constituent board, it's about restoring the child, finding ways to help the child remain in school or to receive the services that they need. Having experienced working with with parents and students, it can be traumatic. And what I'm concerned about is that if there's a reason why a parent wants to appeal it, now they're going to have to go through this Office of Investigation Compliance, which is another layer of appeal, can be traumatic on on the families and the students. And and then it could come to the board. So I really feel that in this policy, we should remove the, in the process, remove the Office of Investigation and Compliance as part of the discipline process.
Mr. Hollenshed, can I respond?
Yes, sir.
I I understand my learner trustees concerned for more debate, particularly around policies J F A, F A A, J K, J K. I respect that, but these are not philosophical shifts. They're structural rewrites to reflect the reality that constituent boards no longer exist. This is not the time to rework disciplinary frameworks, rewrite enrollment procedures from scratch. This is time to ensure we have a lawful functioning framework in place when the law changes in less than a month. The good news is, as a board, we can and we will revisit these policies over the course of the year. And that is the beauty of working board. We're not locked in, but today we must act decisively, move them forward, adopt both groups of policies. Updates is presented along with the resolution when we come up to discussing that with the understanding that there are operational necessities. Staff must have the flexibility to build the system before August thirteenth, when school starts. And the board will retain full authority to amend these policies in the future, taking into consideration some of your concerns.
Yes, Mr. Grabowski, I appreciate that. And Dr. Temple, we certainly hear and understand and very much respect your concerns. The 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 process we've committed to, we're not going to wait a semester to come to the board and update you. We're not going to even wait nine weeks. Dr. Coakley and her team will be working with us and our counsel to, on a weekly basis, review what's happening with this process so that we make real time shifts and inform the board when there are concerns about the process. We don't want for children, families to be disenfranchised. We want this process to be smooth and easy. We believe that an an appeal, a parent's appeal from the initial hearing to the Office of Compliance and Investigation of the record, which does not mean another hearing takes place. But Mr. Douglas will review from start to finish the process, the protocol, the decision to ensure another layer of due process and that students and families hear, feel heard in this process. Really, again, to alleviate any concerns that might exist about the abolishment of the constituent boards, to allow multiple layers. And Mr. Douglas currently acts as a direct report to me and actually as a liaison with general counsel when neutral third party investigations have to be conducted. Mr. Mr. Douglas has done so at the direction of both me and at the direction of Mr. Johnson. So again, this extra layer is a layer of due process and fairness to families so that they feel they've had multiple outlets to be heard before they finally have the the ability to appeal to the Board of Trustees. But we're happy to answer any other questions you may have.
Yes, ma'am.
Well, the concern, the other concern I have, and it has nothing to do, I want to make this very clear, with the people who operate.
Absolutely.
Okay. But this appeal group is, is our employees of the district. So I do not see them as third party operators here. And that's also a concern I have. And the second point is that other districts do operate with hearing panels and they don't have this intermediary step. And so I see this step as unnecessary.
I understand. And Dr. Coakley, I don't know if you want to speak. And certainly, we know that this isn't personal and we very much respect your role as a trustee. Most districts only have hearing officers. There are some that have hearing panels. And there's really no way around in districts across South Carolina and across the nation, these panels are a function in most instances of, in ninety percent plus the district with, as I stated back in May when we first discussed this, a dotted line to the superintendent. Inevitably, I know it's hard to think about the neutrality of such, but my job is to abide by all board policy. And so I run the risk if if anyone between me doesn't follow a policy of of being sanctioned by the board myself. So again, my job is to ensure compliance with policy. And I have to trust that the executive director of Investigations and Compliance will do that, as will Dr. Coakley and her team in ensuring compliance with the Student Code of Conduct, the Progressive Discipline Plan and state law. Dr. Coakley, will you want to add to that, please, ma'am?
Yes, thank you. So I think what we have here is a complex situation. When we compare it to other districts, you are correct, Dr. Temple, where we would have had a hearing officer. And once that decision has been made, then it actually would have been appealed to the deputy of Student Support Services. In this case, at the will of the board, we have created hearing panels. And that hearing panel needs to be managed by someone. So the dotted line is going to Superintendent Huggins. But I will be providing direct support based on the structure that we have created. Therefore, it removes me from that appeal process, if that makes sense. So someone would have to step in to provide that second layer of appeal because as the associate superintendent, I would not be able to do so. However, Mr. Oscar Douglas, who does current investigations and compliance, he has that background information on due process. I have gone to him on many occasions just to fact check my understanding of what we're doing in the system, making sure that we are compliant with some outside law. I have strong faith in him and making sure that he follows that process with the appeal. And I will not be far away from that. I will still be responsible for making sure we uphold time in, time out, as we do now even with our DOS level hearing. And I think what is important to hear is when we look at the current structure of our student discipline hearing, if it's a DOS level hearing, that DOS level hearing is then appealed to the constituent board. If the parent or school continues the appeal process, it is then appealed to the Board of Trustees. So there are still two layers of an appeal process if it began at DOS. The problem is that you guys haven't seen many DOS appeals, which is a great thing. You know, we can count on one hand less than the number of fingers we have on one hand, how many DOS appeals we've had in a year. So with that process, DOS level hearing, CCSD discipline hearing, then it goes to the Office of Investigations and Compliance, which would have been our constituent board. And then it goes to the Board of Trustees, the same process that we have in place right now if we had had constituent boards continuing. I hope that makes sense.
It is fairly complex. That was brilliant, Dr. Coakley, thank you.
Ms. Chuet?
I guess that it doesn't make sense to me, I guess, because from my understanding, the current process didn't have three steps and the new process is going to have three steps.
And that's where the complexity came in at. Our constituent boards made the decision on which hearings would be a DOS hearing and which hearings would be a constituent board hearing. But if the hearing started at the DOS level, there was always two additional steps to the appeal. So a parent had the DOS hearing, they disagreed, it's appealed to the constituent board. If there was still disagreement, then it was appealed to the Board of Trustees.
So and Dr. Coakley is is spot on. So Ms. Chuet, let's let's do a real life example for the board. So Asher is insubordinate in class over and over and refuses to obey. He gets referred three times to the administration. At the third time, Asher goes to the principal for the refusal to obey, which is a level two. And I hope I'm not butchering this, I'm making it up as I go. The third time Asher goes to the principal, Mr. Prentice, that's kind of comical. The principal, Ms. Simmons, the, Ms. Simmons says, you go in, you go in for a hearing. But it's, but because of the level of that infraction, Asher doesn't have to go to the hearing panel. Asher could go to, in the old, in the old framework. Asher didn't have to go to the constituent board because it was a level two offense. He didn't have to go to the constituent board, he got to go see somebody in Dr. Coakley's office. But next week, God forbid, Asher just has a really bad morning and decides he's going to hide behind the cafeteria door. And when some friends who's picked on him come walking by, he's going to jump out and pounce them. And he gets charged with assault, which is a level three, immediate go to the constituent board. In the case of Asher's bad and he doesn't obey because Asher's Anita's son and it's a level two offense and he goes to DOS, if if Anita and Terrell didn't like the hearing officer's judgment, Anita and Terrell could appeal to the constituent board in that case, in the old setting. In the case of Asher assaults somebody and goes to the constituent board first, he only can appeal to the Board of Trustees. So in the assault case, now there's an extra opportunity for Anita and Terrell to appeal to Mr. Douglas. There's that extra layer. But in the case of Asher just doesn't, he habitually doesn't listen and he had three level twos, it would be the same process. We would go to DOS and then we would have the ability to appeal to what would now be the constituent board, Mr. Douglas. And then if we still didn't like Mr. Douglas's decision, we could come to the board. It's very complex and without a chart, it's hard to sometimes audibly process it. But in the old way, there were two different types of hearings going on at the request of the constituent board, not the district. But the request of the constituent board, there were the DOS hearings and there were the constituent board hearings. And here, there were three layers of appeal, which currently would still exist with the policy. And here, there was only two. And we're just making it all consistent so that every family has the opportunity to be heard, to appeal of the record, and then to come to the board without taking away a level of due process that fortunately you all really never saw because Dr. Coakley's hearings went so well in the Department of Student Support. I know it's complex and I'm sorry for the complexity, but Dr. Coakley, did I?
You did, you did very well, thank you.
That's the best I can do.
Other questions?
Watley first, then I can appeal, Watley.
All right, if if Dr.. Just to make sure that I'm understanding things correctly, Mr. Douglas's position was created with the State House along with the district, correct?
Tell me that again, Ms. Watley, I'm sorry.
Mr. Douglas's position, the the office that that he resides in was created as a joint effort on the State House and the district, correct?
That's a great question. So Mr. Douglas's position was actually created by the prior administration to to conduct sensitive investigations regarding internal and external matters that required engagement with law enforcement oftentimes and in collaboration with with Mr. Reinbach. So this work, Mrs. Watley, would expand his portfolio if if so approved.
And Mr. Douglas also has extensive years of background in law enforcement.
Absolutely, yes, ma'am.
So he has a thorough knowledge of civil and criminal law as well as due process.
Regrettably, yes.
And he's also, he's also. And he's also, he's also taken multiple cases before judges in his tenure.
He has.
So he's more than qualified to set in this position.
He has, and, 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 and Mr. Douglas, um, and taking the human out of it. If, if, if Mr. Douglas were to decide tomorrow he wanted to do something else, which we hope he wouldn't do, but if he did, we would look with someone with similar credentials for that position, because we believe that that experience gives him the ability to be neutral. And Mr. Douglas has had to come to me and say before, um, you know, X, Y, and Z wasn't handled appropriately. We needed to do A, B, and C. And, and sometimes we've engaged with, um, Mr. Reinbach, and, and, and sometimes we haven't. But I have found him to be, um, very objective, um, even when, particularly when the district may have needed some improvement in its processes. His role is really, um, to evaluate things, to make sure that we're serving people well and that we're doing the right thing.
And, and just to point out again, there's another level of, of, of authority, not just with us. Accountability, I should say.
Ab, absolutely. It gives--
With the general assembly.
Multiple, yes, it gives multiple layers, um, of opportunity for kids and families.
Thank you, ma'am.
Yes.
Yeah, uh, well, the question that I have is, is I was listening to Dr. Cokely and, um, and Superintendent Huggins. Um, the policy, will there, will there be DOS, DOS hearings at all?
So, thank you. No, there would not need to be a separation of what would be DOS and what would be constituent board. So we would have student discipline hearings. What we're maintaining is the opportunity for parents to still have the two routes to do the appeal, which would be to the Office of Investigation and Compliance, and then, of course, the Board of Trustees.
Okay, so there would not be that layer of DOS hearings?
No, there would not.
Because I didn't see it in the--
No, no, no. There would not be.
Really thoughtful questions, Dr. Temple. Thank you for taking a close eye at it.
Um, Ms. Roberson, or anybody has any other comments?
Yeah, I just--
I do.
We'll repass this, Roberson, over.
Ms. Roberson.
Yes, thank you. Um, just as I asked before to have rationales to company policy, I would ask that, because this is new, I completely understand the process. I asked these same questions when we, when this was introduced by staff at our last meeting. So I asked that maybe staff put together a flow chart to show what was and what will be. And maybe that will help simplify, um, the process.
Ms. Roberson, that is an excellent suggestion, a flow chart. Um, we, we, at your suggestion, linked in the agenda, um, for the trustees, the rationale for policy revisions. But I don't disagree at all that a, 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 a flow chart linkage or, um, something that we, uh, may have shared in May that could have been helpful, that we put that in there. So I'm going to ask Ms., um, Ms. Hampton and, and Ms. Thompson, who worked on these rationales with staff, to add that to that document, policy update summaries that are linked to board docs. Thank you so much, Mrs. Roberson.
Uh, one more second. She, we cut her off.
She, she might not be done either.
Go ahead, Ms. Roberson.
Oh, no, I'm done. Thank you.
No, thank you, and thank you for the suggestion. We hope it's, we hope it's helpful and thorough, once you have a final chance to review our addition.
I guess I just wanted to finish, um, and actually, it was going to be similar to Ms. Roberson, but I also am wondering if we can, um, get a timeline, you know, a milestone chart or, or some sort of, mm-hmm, mapping of what this looks like sideways, as opposed to just flow chart-wise.
Sure, Ms. Ms. Jewett, we can work to put that together again. We'll be looking at this--
Like this, but with a timeline. Like, how, what's the maximum of time that this could be linked?
Absolutely. We can, we can look at how we go. Dr. Cokely?
Yep, so state regulations, once we give the parent that letter, we have fifteen days to actually conduct the hearing. And then we can deliver the decision within ten school days. All of our hearings and decisions are typically given in the same day, um, unless something happens during that hearing where a parent says charges have been dropped or, um, actually this, we have information to show that a student might have, um, not actually committed that crime. We might say, hold, we'll give it twenty-four, forty-eight hours for the parent to give us the updated, um, information. So we make, again, fair decisions on our due process. But we definitely, at the DOS level, we adhere by fifteen days and then ten days for that decision-making. The appeals for our families and our schools is hindered upon that ten school days as well. So we ask them to submit as soon as possible, so it doesn't stretch out to the ten days, but it's the ten days that they have for the appeal. So we follow at the DOS level, um, and I, I'm, that is what I'm most excited about, that we will be able to adhere to the fifteen and ten, because we'll be able to operate those hearings Monday through Thursday, Friday if needed, throughout the entire day, and then once a week at night if needed for a parent, which is something we have not had that opportunity to do before now.
We'll work to put that, uh, Ms. Jewett. We'll, um, what Dr. Cokely just eloquently explained, we'll work to make sure it's on that flow chart there, so it's easy to understand.
Is it going to be possible for the public to see something like this?
Oh, absolutely. All of this will be documented on our website as soon as, um, we, we get through the first reading. Yes, ma'am. We sure will. Absolutely.
Yeah, and I just think we're, I, I think we're just losing totally perspective of this. I mean, this, this is a motion to amend, to take these policies completely out of this group. And what we're, the original motion is to put all these policies up forward for a first reading. And so your first reading is going to be in June. Then we don't have anything in July. Your second reading's not going to be into August. That gives the district plenty of time to respond to all the concerns that have been raised. But we need to get this staff, based upon their subject matter expertise and how this is set up, they need to get this in place. You just can't remove these policies. I mean, i- it's not like there's any radical change going on here. They have to have something in place by August thirteenth. That's what the law says. So that's why, I, I think the concerns are valid. It's been acknowledged very complex, and I think the district has some work to do before the second reading comes through and they become policies.
So I, I'm, we're happy to add some clarity, as Mrs. Roberson suggested. We can add the flow chart to the rationale. We can include the timeline. But the district does not recommend any change to what's presented here in the policies. So I think you have to vote tonight on whether you're going to move the policies as they're written, which we recommend, forward to June twenty-sixth or twenty-third for the formal first reading. Um, and, um, but the district recommendation, based on extensive research that our teams had done, um, extensive engagement with principals, um, meeting with you all and other stakeholders, is to move these policies forward, um, to begin the process, to assess the process, and to come back to the board and to report to the board, um, the number of cases we're hearing, what sort of decisions are, uh, they're being resulted in, the timeline, and to certainly suggest to the board if we're having challenges with that. We don't, um, we don't suggest the removal of Mr. Douglas, uh, or, excuse me, the Office of, um, Investigations and Compliance, because it takes away a layer of due process some families have been used to from DOS. We don't, uh, recommend any other changes. Um, so we would, we would ask that the board, um, vote to move these forward for first reading on June the twenty-third, I think it is. Thank you, Mr. Grabowski.
I just want to say, my motion was for us to be able to discuss these three policies. And, um, I think we've had a, a good discussion of it. I like the idea of the timeline. I think that would be really helpful. But I think also, uh, oftentimes with policies that have a lot of process to them, that the policy can have an R, um, to it, which would then really make it clear, because you all have been talking about a lot of things that you're going to do and so on and so forth. And I think that we really need to have that R policy, so that we're consistent. We know what we're doing at such point. If we have to change, we know where we're changing it. But I, I'm just concerned that if we don't have this spelled out, I mean, one of the reasons we said, well, one of the reasons why the legislature said that we, we're removing the, uh, constituent boards was for consistency. So we think it's going to be really important and inherent for us to have a clear, consistent process, that people know what's going on and that we as board members know we're following it, and that you as staff members know this is where we're going. Just like we have ours with, you know, several processes, our curriculum development, all that. I think this is so significant that these policies need a R piece to them.
Very, very well said, uh, Dr. Temple. Um, out of respect to the board, however, we brought the policies forward, because the regulation does not require, the rule does not require your approval. So out of respect for the board and the constituent boards who have served so well, we adjusted the policies to be very clear and transparent, we felt, in regards to processes, which I would agree should be in an admin rule and not the policy. But because we wanted your input, we brought it forward to you in the policy. And so we're happy to develop an admin rule that, um, digs a little deeper, but I would want to keep these things in the policy to give the board the kind of feedback that we feel you deserve and that's warranted, um, for this.
I appreciate your, your honesty with that. Let me just say, I thank you, Dr. Temple, um, because you brought it to my attention and you brought it to others. Let me just say this, though. I appreciate you saying you didn't have to bring it to the board, but at the end of the day, we're responsible to the public, and the public then comes and asks us questions. So then, you know, we're liable, whether you think so or not. Um, I'm going, I'm going to, uh, turn it over to Ms. Watley, and then we can move forward.
So Mr. Hollingshead, let me make sure I clarify. I, I don't mean to suggest at all that the board's not responsible to the public, but admin rules go into the day-to-day management of processes that staff enlist and works on to ensure that we are fairly and accurately serving kids, and we're working together to advance outcomes for kids. And we've moved forward after extensive research, national research and state-ish, uh, research, and feedback from our principals that didn't, wasn't necessarily favorable for the process that we've moved forward, to establish panels with multiple people to hear disciplined cases within two layers of appeal. One to an intermediary on the, of the record, and then to the board. So if we develop an admin rule, which we can, those, the way things currently are, I'll just suggest that we, we brought this in the policy, because we wanted the board's review and approval. So I don't mean to suggest that the board shirks its responsibility from public feedback or at all.
I'd like to come for the question for the, to vote on the amendment.
Ms. Watley.
I'd like to talk too, so, I'd like to have a question, so.
Let's leave it. Then Ms. Watley.
Um--
Then Ms. McKinney.
So, um, one of the, Mr. Douglas, is, is his name going to be public as far as the process on a webs, website? And is--
His, his position will be on the website. We may put his name on there as well, since he's currently the executive director. He's already listed on there. We hadn't gotten that granularly yet, Ms. Lieber, but we're certainly open to your feedback on that.
Yeah, just that, you know, I know he'd get a lot of concern, and it'd be nice to have that on the, the list. It, it, and it, as far as like even like the metrics on how long this process takes, um, even if, I hate to say it, if it's public of what the current process would be, kind of setting an expectation for children or, or parents of how long this process really does last? And adding that to the website?
We'll make sure we're really transparent with all that. Um, Dr. Cokely's getting that. And so I've got it down here as well. We'll do as Ms. Jewett suggested and add that timeline to that flow chart, so it's really clear.
Yeah, and, and I guess I go back to the, you know, our founding legislative, or ju, a jury, is a jury of your peers, and recognizing that a significant number of the violators tend to be male. And when it comes to the hearing panel, some sort of reflection that there's a, at least one man on, on this.
Dr. Cokely, do you want to respond to that?
I could not agree with you more. I agree.
We want to make sure our panels are diverse in both gender and ethnicity, and, uh, people who have varied, um, experiences, Ms. Lieber. So thank you for making that point.
Yeah, my, my concern is that, in, in just the panel of three, that might be limited in, in how diverse you can bring your peers in.
We understand. We'll, we, we want to get started with the process and, and see what it looks like. Like I suggested before, most districts across the nation only use hearing officers, meaning one person hears the cases. And so, so we're really trying to meet the feedback from, we're really trying to meet in the middle here, between the feedback from principals who are really engaged in this process, the feedback from the board, the feedback we've heard from families, the feedback from DOS. And so we believe three is a good way to start. And then if it's just not working, we're going to be very transparent about that, because, um, you'll hear about it if it's not working. And we, again, we want to be good stewards of the children that we serve and their families.
Um, I, I guess the other thing, um, might be an understanding of like, um, undiagnosed, uh, undiagnosed learning disabilities associated some of these kids that come in, um, whether there's a waiting list and how that's managed. I don't know if that's de, designed in a policy or anything.
Um, Dr. Cokely, do you want to respond to that?
So as it relates to student with student discipline, the school completes the demographic page, which is page two of the packet that talks about, um, the student having an IEP five oh four. But that checklist in the front also asks school administrators that question, uh, is this student being considered for a disability? If the student's being considered for the disability, the school still has the right to conduct that MDR to determine if it's related to the disability. But that is if we are aware, um, of the student's disability or if the school suspects a disability. If neither one of those things are known, we move into the hearing believing that the student is a gen ed student. And so we process that packet as a gen ed student, um, would have. We have many cases where parents wait until after the incident has occurred to inform us of a situation under IDEA that student's still considered gen ed, because the school was not informed of anything until after, um, the incident occurred. Now it is up to the school administrator to decide if they would like to pull back, do a little bit more research for that student, so forth. But I think it goes back to Superintendent Huggins' example. If this is a level-three of assault or, um, distribution or so forth, we're most likely going to move forward with that hearing, because it's a high-level offense that occurred. So we need to address it.
Well, I, I guess just one more question.
We got to move on.
Oh, I got time. My time has not stopped yet. I-- Um, just, just curious to, I'd like to really set a date on when this gets reviewed. And that's, um, the confidence to know. It's too difficult to get things on the agenda when you have concerns, and I'd want to set a date in stone.
So I'm, I don't, I'm not sure I'm, I'm really clear on, um, a date. We, we can have an updated timeline and most, most on chart to you tomorrow. But I don't, I'm not sure I understand. I want to be clear. I know for staff, um, we don't mind, um, updating the chart. We can update the rationale. We can make sure there's a timeline. But as Mr. Grabowski said, it's really important to get these policies moving. We didn't want the board to suspend its rules and only adopt them in one reading. Um, but the staff needs to be able to execute and begin communicating.
Maybe I need to clarify, is just, um, for this, ought to have this policy on the agenda, you know, maybe October for review, so that there's no question that we have, we can able to talk about this and what we've discovered.
So we can come to the board as early as September. We'll be reviewing--
At, at all things.
Yeah, we'll be reviewing these things. We can mark it on our calendar. Trudy can put it on our calendar tomorrow. We can bring an item to the board for review--
I think she means like--
As early as September.
View of how's, yeah, how's it going?
So students will be in school August sixth, August twentieth. And so in Sept, in September Cal, as early as three weeks, there won't be that many discipline cases, but as early as the September Cal, we can add this item to the agenda.
Yeah, I, I guess I was thinking more of October, just to kind of get a full cycle and have some example.
We don't want to wait two months.
So, right. I, I would agree September, because we already have cases coming in. So there are certain incidents that occur over the summer that we are going to have to address ASAP. And so we, we want to make sure that we are conducting these cases as soon as possible. Um, every day, we're getting LENS, which is law enforcement notification about incidents that are happening off-campus. There are three particular cases that if it happens off-campus, we're going to address. There are three particular cases that if it happens off campus, we're going to address as a district. So we would be ready by September to talk with you about how this process is working.
So Trudy, if you'll add that to the COW for September, we'd be really grateful. Thank you for that.
So we've had, we've had quite a robust conversation. So I just want to kind of bring us back around full circle. Dr. Temple, you, you currently were discussing your friendly amendment to the motion. At this time, before we vote, do you want us to vote on your friendly amendment? Or do you want to withdraw that and we vote on the original motion?
Thanks. One, I would like to say one more thing. And that is with the hearing panel and the community representative, I, I don't want to micromanage how this works, but I'm thinking we may need a pool of people from the community. It may not be just one person. So I hope we stay flexible with seeing how that works. And then I will pull my motion.
Dr. Temple, I promise we will be Dr. Temple.
We're back to the original motion.
I can originally vote, so we have first and second. All those signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Item moves forward to consent agenda. We are at policy D, policy GTC slash GDC, leave of absence. The entertaining motion.
I so moved.
Second.
Motion made in second, ready for the question. All those signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carried forward to consent agenda item. Policy BID, board member compensation. The entertaining motion.
So moved.
I have a second.
A second.
Moving second, ready for the question. All those signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? That's the move to consent agenda item. And that concludes it, Mr. Chair, Ms. Chairman.
Madam Chairman.
Thank you. Well done. With, with that being said, we will move on to item seven A. Is there a motion to move calendar A edited to include a reduced number of early release days from seven to four to the June Board of Trustees meeting for adoption?
So moved.
A friendly request to amend the motion and I would like to open this up to further discussion.
Not a motion at this point.
So moved.
I second. Now you can make your friendly amendment.
I would like to amend this motion. And I'd like to have a conversation about this calendar. Should I give you guys my motion first or do you want?
Yes.
The motion would be to move calendar A with a reduced number of early release days with early release days on September fourth, two thousand twenty-six, February twelfth, two thousand twenty-seven, March twelfth, two thousand twenty-seven, and May twenty-seventh, two thousand twenty-seven, with progress reports for the first semester being released on September eighth, two thousand twenty-six. The motion originally actually is incorrect. The original calendar had six days and it's being moved to four days.
Second.
Ms. Denny, should we let Ms. Denny make her presentation? Would that help clarify? I, I would like for us to, to afford Ms. Denny a presentation because it may well answer questions.
Not we've moved on.
That's okay.
Thanks so much, Mrs. McKinney. So I think the. Can y'all hear me now? Wonderful. Thank you, Mrs. McKinney. So the committee should be very familiar. The board should be very familiar at this point with the committee's timeline. Would you advance the next slide, please? Thank you. So in two thousand twenty-three, there was a community survey. It's really informed all the committee's decisions to ensure consistency across numerous academic years. You'll see other steps and then pending board approval, we'd like to have the twenty-six, twenty-seven academic calendar approved by the end of June. So I'd like to go over the committee membership. It's really important to us to develop a broad community committee. And that committee is comprised of three executive members. Those executive members are one parent, one teacher and one administrator. Each group, calendar A, B and C each had its own work group and they included at least one parent and at least one teacher. You'll see there were twenty-one work group members. They were community members, employees, employees and parents and ten parents only. So there was a rather large parent voice. So I'm sure you're wondering what the community said at our community survey. We had over three thousand unique responses across all regions. And you'll see from the pie chart to your right, the types of respondents, whether they be current students, parents and guardians, parent guardian and employee or employees only. You'll see that the greatest number of respondents, fifty-three point three percent, came from parents and guardians. Most parents who completed our survey, as you know, from last month's COW meeting, we added a question to ask parents their preference for early release days. And so that question indicated to us that most parents preferred three to six early release days. And employ, employees favored three to four early release days. So a question that we always entertain is where do the respondents live? And you'll see here on this pie chart that our respondents really do come from across Charleston County, including individuals that are non-resident parents and non-resident employees, with the greatest proportion of respondents coming from the East Cooper region. So I think it's always important to talk about what your constituents preferred. Constituents were given the option to choose rank order preferences between calendar A, calendar B and calendar C. And you'll see very clearly from this stacked chart that across all areas of the county in each region, calendar A was the preferred calendar, followed by calendar C. And in third was calendar B. So these are just some highlights of each of the calendar choices. You'll see that calendar A is a staff recommendation. Overall, our recommendation was such because fifty-two point forty-seven percent of all respondents chose calendar A as their first preference. Sixty-one point one eight of all employees ranked calendar A and it won in every region of the county, as you saw. I would like to note though, however, and I, I made mention of this earlier in the presentation, but the original calendar A had more early release days than the calendar A that we're bringing before you today. We thought it was very important to hear the voices of the community and employees. And so the revised version includes only four early release days. And it seems responsive to the top parent concerns. So we recommend calendar A. Again, it was the most popular across all stakeholder groups. It has balanced start dates and end dates. It's got alignment with instructional goals and staff needs and minimizes disruptions and maximizes learning time. So if approved, calendar A will be adopted as the official twenty-six, twenty-seven calendar for Charleston County School District.
I'm here.
One edit, I think we discussed on the slide where the comparisons were A, B and C that the year should be two thousand twenty-six. And I think it, we corrected it, but it's still showing up two thousand twenty-five.
Oh, I'm so sorry.
That's hilarious. Thank you, Mrs. McKinney.
Make, so if anybody has a question, that's what we're talking about.
Thank you, Mrs. McKinney. I'm, we're sorry about that.
That's all right. That's all right. So Ms. Jewett has made a motion to amend the original motion. And was, Mr. Grabowski, did you make the original motion and you accepted her? So.
We are technically debating her motion.
Right.
To.
Ask the floor for a question.
And I think Ms. Jewett, it may help all of us if you would kindly repeat the dates that you want changed.
I would like early release days on September fourth, February twelfth, March twelfth and May twenty-seventh with a progress report change date to September eighth. The reason I ask for these is because as a parent and as somebody who actually spoke with most of my constituents, or not most of my constituents, but constituents around all of my district, my area, north, south, middle, all of District Two. One of the biggest complaints that we had, that parents had and actually teachers had in the fall of this current calendar was that we had days off allocated throughout the fall. And then we also ended up having weather days on top of those dates. For student outcome, it is not going to be beneficial to have multiple weeks with shortened academic progress. By putting in, by taking out the August twenty-eighth, sorry, the September fourth date that was originally in there and leaving in the September eighteenth date, you then are having two weeks of back-to-back disruption in September. When was Hurricane Hugo? Does anybody remember?
September twenty-sixth.
Okay. Every hurricane we have ever had is in those months, September, October. By having multiple weeks of disruption already allocated, we are already putting ourselves at a disadvantage. So all I'm requesting is that you move that half-day or early release day from the eighteenth to the fourth so that you have it consistent with a long weekend.
I would like to respond to that.
Mike, you, you're fired, you're fired from that. You made really great videos, but no more clock. Plus, Mrs. McKinney just lost ten seconds because I'm talking.
Oh, I'll make it easy on him. This is less than two minutes. I support the calendar such that we have no idea about weather. We may or may not have weather, high tide or rain. Just ask Ms. Bailey trying to get downtown for meetings. But I think the September eighteenth early release would certainly help teachers who on that Monday are giving out report cards.
That's with my motion, there's, sorry. The entire motion includes that moving so that they plan ahead on the fourth.
My point being that early release on a Friday afternoon helps teachers prepare report cards and progress reports. We, we are starting school on August the eleventh. So that gives, that gives us time to have academic progress so that students can receive report cards and progress reports. That being said, I think the teacher input counts too.
If I could speak. Yeah, and, and when I look at District.
Oh.
I'm running Monopoly, but go ahead. Go ahead.
The things you're doing.
All I was asked.
Go ahead.
Yes. Go ahead, Mr. Grabowski.
I'm fine.
All I did was ask.
If you'll say Madam Care.
I did say Madam Care. But you took the floor. So go ahead.
I apologize, Mr. Holland, said if I stepped on you. When I look at, and I did talk to a lot of my constituents and it was very diverse as to their needs. And calendar A by far was the calendar of choice. I caution changing any of this because this is what I discuss with my constituents. This is what was given to the teachers. And you had sixty-one percent of staff looking at it. So I do not feel like we need to be changing something mid-course. You know, when you've already got your data as to how we normally do this in presenting it to staff and to our constituents. I did not provide my constituents with the changes in here. I did talk to them about calendar A, B and C. And there's no question, I am voting in favor of calendar A. And I don't feel like we should be amending any of the calendars at this point of this process. That's all.
Mr. Holland.
Yeah, I'm going to vote for the amendment. Y'all, roll me over. I'm voting for the amendment.
Any other discussion? Yeah, I wanted to discuss this too. If you will speak into your mic so others can hear you. I really appreciate all the work that's gone into this and I appreciate the work that Ms. Jewett has really looked at analyzing this calendars. I think it would always be helpful when we're doing these calendars to show the pros and cons of them. And one of the analysis that I did was looking at the calendar in terms of the number of weeks in which students were in school for five days. And I really do appreciate the fact that we've cut back on early release because it was a nightmare as a grandma to try to figure out when I was going to have the kids. But I think, I think that when we look at this calendar, maybe what we could see is in A, we have twenty-two of the thirty-six weeks that are really five-day weeks. In calendar B, we had twenty-four weeks. And in calendar C, we had twenty-two weeks. So I think if we could just make an adjustment in A that would give us another week or two of full instruction because I think, you know, that gives us, that gives us good learning time. It stops this pop-up kind of stuff. So that's why I was open to modifying A so that we have the best scenario with weeks that we have full weeks rather than something distorted. And then I also do want to say, if we could change the color, I look at the Fort Mill calendar and their colors, I, I just can't distinguish between the pink and the red here. And I'm probably not the only one. So I do want to make that suggestion.
You know, as a, as a grandmother now, Dr. Temple, we have the electronic version that'll sync up with your phone. We can help you. Okay?
Can I say something?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, um, thank you. I don't have a, a dog in this fight because I only have a grandpuppy. So I, I respect Ms. Jewett's, her comments and her concerns. What I would like to suggest moving forward is because what I base, this is my fourth calendar. And what I base my decision on is what my constituents, with their results come back to say because it's them that this calendar would affect. So maybe moving forward, instead of the board giving their opinions after the survey, maybe we need to give our opinions about the dates on the front end. and then send it out to our constituents. And that way, we would have had an opportunity to provide our input and not come back on the back end once our constituents have given us their recommendations. And then we have a hard time trying to decide, you know, how we're going to move forward.
Thank you. That's very well noted, Ms. Watley.
I completely agree with Ms. Roberson. She made an excellent point. That was something that was concerning to me, too, is changing the dates this late in the game, I think, would create a lot of, sorry, I was in the middle of talking. I've lost my train of thought now.
You were supporting it.
Yeah, I just, I think it's, I think it's a little late to start changing, and I know there's legal ramifications, too, with the district, and part of the recommendations that they make are in compliance with state law and other factors. But at the end of the day, I as well want to support what my constituents have said, and it's clear from the data that my constituents support Calendar A, so that's my intention.
Can I have any of, Ms. Bailey?
Okay, my question is this. This is the purpose of having a survey and having the majority rule for Calendar A if we're gonna go back and change it. And I concur with Ms. Roberson. We should have asked these questions well before now. So short, sweet, and simple. Leave it as it is because the teachers and the constituents have already spoken.
May I speak again?
Ms. Lieber?
So just for clarification, is this a first reading or the only reading?
No, the motion is that it goes to the board meeting for adoption.
Okay. So just as a clarification, or my, I agree 100% with Ms. Roberson. The other thing is that these are quite complicated unless you look at them with a discerning eye. It's very difficult to really see what you're seeing, and I can respect, Ms. Jewitt called me and talked specifically about how she analyzed this. And I have to, unless her decision has changed from commentary, I actually would have to say that I'm supporting Ms. Jewitt in this, to recommend this change.
Say that again?
Oh, we've, I couldn't hear you. I said unless Ms. Jewitt says that through the discussion she has changed her recommendation, I'm for at least telling the public that this would be a recommended change. If the public comes back and says, hey, we, you know, wholeheartedly disagree with this decision, then we can come back and readjust this.
So are we ready for the question? So on the floor is the amendment.
May I say one more thing, please? The survey came out and it was, yes, people had a few weeks to take it, but I would highly suggest that this survey not go out at the end of the school year when everybody is slammed with a million other things. If it took me three weeks of analyzing these calendars over and over and over and over and over again, I'm pretty sure that whether or not your constituents chose A because it was the recommended calendar or not, most of them probably selected A just because it was the recommended calendar, not necessarily because they understood the calendars. So I have to say that as much work as there was put into it, and I do appreciate all the work that was put into it, I don't think that it's fair to say that this survey is the end-all, be-all and that everybody here really, truly understood what they were reading and really, truly knew how to vote.
If I may, when we sent the survey to the public, there was no recommendation attached to that survey. So community members received all three calendars without a staff recommendation.
I think it had a different color.
All three. There was, there was one that was a tan color, one that was a green color, and one that was a blue color. And that was just to differentiate between the versions so that folks wouldn't think that they were looking at the same one.
I have one more question. September the 4th, you want that early-release date to be moved to, correct? September the 4th?
No, she's on Calendar A. She's wanting September the 18th to be September 4th.
Okay, why would you move that early-release date to the, from the 18th to the 4th when teachers have to get grades in?
I also, I also-
I'm talking.
Oh, sorry. You were asking me.
Why would you move that day when teachers have to get the grades in to prepare progress reports or report cards? Why would you move that day?
The entirety of my motion is to also move the progress report date.
See, that's a lot of changing here.
No, it's two dates. And we are willing, if I may, to take away May 1st as a, as a planning day for Calendar 2026, 2526. So we're willing to take away that day, but-
So Ms. Jewitt, it's important to know that a certain number of days have to have passed before progress report-
It's after four weeks.
Can be, okay, but, but in that, in Calendar A, if you move, if you move the day to the 4th for the purpose of planning for distribution the next week, students won't have been in school for four weeks. So it, teachers, students won't start till the 11th. So they won't have been in school until September the 9th. Does that, do you see that on that?
Then we would move it to September the 9th. Sorry, I said the 8th, meaning then I guess the 9th would be the date.
Okay.
So they would plan on the 4th and then-
They have to have been in school for four weeks of instruction. So you don't issue progress reports after kids have had four and a half weeks of instruction. So they would have to have gone to school through the 9th at least, and I don't know, is it four weeks? Four, four weeks, four, four interims. So normally it's four and a half because there's a nine-week. So it would have to at least, they would have to attend at least through the 9th for assessment in order to put out reports the next week. So, so-
I would like to see if teachers would respond to this. I would like to know if teachers would prefer to be able to plan on the 4th and have a longer weekend than have two interrupted weeks in a row in September. I would like to know what teachers have to say about that.
Well, they had a chance to respond to this survey.
Because it wasn't in this, it wasn't in this as such.
Well, no, that wasn't an option. You're right. That was not an option.
Right.
It wasn't an option because, because students have to attend for a certain number of days before we can issue progress reports. Yes, ma'am. But I, I mean, I hear you, concerns about the distribution of the survey, the analyzation, constituent feedback. I've taken all, all your feedback, and I will, we will make sure to work with Ms. Denny on this.
So I think everybody's spoken. We'll call for the question, but Mr. Grabowski is pressing his hand.
You're playing with, I mean, you're talking about something that staff worked with, who are the subject matter. Working with dates and everything to accommodate these concerns that may have been raised by parents. When I was given something that had worked on for a long time, this discussion can happen next year. It could be for something that, but staff are the experts on this. They put this up because they have to comply with the law. When we start playing with stuff that we may be making changes here on the basis that may affect our responsibility, the law is a dangerous precedent to be setting. So I presented to my constituent three calendars. And I'm sure all of you did too. And if you went through this other discussion that was presented, that's on you.
Fine.
But the motion should be, I don't even understand your motion. If you're trying to amend A, that's the motion.
Well, the way the motion read was not very clear. It did not, it did not specify those dates. It did not give any information on how these early-release dates would be distributed. It was incorrect. It had, they had originally had six days, and then they had, they moved it to four days.
Can I also add?
Let, let me allow staff to respond to that accusation. Whether it's 6, 7, 18, or 20, I think the motion of Mr. Grabowski made and that's listed is to move Calendar A. There've been a lot of different revisions.
Right, and I'm asking for one more revision. There's been a lot of revisions.
I understand, and that vote's coming up.
Right.
Ms. Bowles, do you have that? Okay, if you'll bring it forward, we'll take the vote.
We have to vote on the amendment first.
I have one more question. About the amendment? Yeah, so I go back and I-
Everybody started voting.
Yeah. We call for the question.
So what is the question, Ms. McKinney? Is it, we're voting first on the amendment?
Correct. It's on yours.
I see it there, please.
Oh. It won't show on the, on the- So for the public, let me read it. Motion to move Calendar A with a reduced number of early-release days with early-release days of September 4th, 2026, February 12th, 2027, March 12th, 2027, and May 27th, 2027, and progress reports on the first semester being released on September 8th, 2026 to the June 23, 25 board meeting for adoption.
Point of personal privilege.
Not while it's moving.
I don't know what to answer with.
Are all the votes in? Okay. And the motion fails.
Now we have to wait on this one.
So. Thank you. Thank you.
Sorry, Ms. McKinney.
Ms. Bowles, if you would, please bring up the motion. The original motion. And it, and it is showing on the screen. So trustees, if you will, cast your vote.
Over here in my lane.
I'm fine. There's room.
Is this the sec-
This is the original motion.
Oh.
And the motion passes. Screen has gone.
Mark my words, there'll be three hurricanes this year.
We will go on to Item 7B. Is there a motion? Scroll down. Keep scrolling.
So moved?
I request to amend this motion as well.
I need a second first. Second.
I request to amend this motion as well. I again, or I request the motion be to move the reduced number of early-release days in the already-approved, published 2025-26 academic calendar from seven to five days to the June, sorry, I told myself to go this way, to the June Board of Trustees meeting with final approval changing to September 12th to a full, or changing September 12th to a full day and moving the progress report date to September 2nd, 2025, and January 16th, 2026 to a full day. My reason for this is again the same thing. This is a-
You need a second.
Oh, sorry.
A second.
This is a time of year that is very difficult for kids, teachers, and parents. We are just getting into a rhythm. We are just getting into a routine, and there is no reason for us to have continuous breaks. There are continuous breaks throughout October and September here. I'm asking to consolidate them into one break. You already have a 29th date, so why not leave it instead of the 12th? As far as the May 1st date, you are removing a day for planning for teachers, the same argument that was made for the last calendar. That is the only day teachers have between spring break and the last day of school, essentially. Why would you remove that day in May 1st?
Ms. Denny, would you like to make your presentation now?
Wait, I have one more thing. This is also three months from now. Please remember that. It is not two years from now. It's three months from now, and you're asking people to take away August 29th, that's part of their holiday vacation that they've already planned on.
We're ready for the slide bit.
Thank you, Mrs. McKinney. Thanks, Preston. So first, I think we, we completely understand and we share parents' concerns about revising an already-published calendar. Once we received the feedback on the number of early-release days preferred in this most recent survey, it, it was significant enough that we felt that it warranted coming to the board to ask for a revision because the majorities of families and employees preferred fewer early-release days. And so this proposal does align 25, 26 with both 24, 25, and potentially 26, 27 calendars, and it avoids long-term inconsistencies. We do believe it preserves more instructional time for students. So that's why this change and why now, we really felt like we had to listen to what the public told us. If you look at the next slide, 85.4% of employees surveyed in May 2025 wanted fewer early-release days. 38% of parents preferred three to four early-release days, and only 18.6% preferred five to six, which is what the currently-approved calendar has. We polled principals on June 3rd, and they overwhelmingly supported a reduction of days for 25, 26, understanding that it is, yes, just three months away. We took some other inputs, and so in 23, 24, we heard loud and clear from the public that they were unhappy with the number of early-release days. We received that feedback regularly. There were eight that year. This year, there were four. We didn't hear as much feedback. It was, it was certainly not nearly as, not nearly as loud. We would hear the occasional concern about early-release days, but not, not nearly to the level that we did in 23, 24. The 25, 26 calendar currently has seven approved. This recommendation originated from the Executive Committee of the Calendar Committee when we saw what the data showed in the May survey. And so 26, 27- And so 26-27, again, we're planning for four, and so we do believe that that'll bring these three years in line. So our recommendation is that on the next slide, we request a reduction in the number of early release days in the 25-26 academic calendar from seven to four. We'd like to change August 29th to a full day. That would allow students to have two full weeks in school after starting the school year. We'd like to change January 16th to a full day. Again, that would eliminate one week of a shortened day in a week, and we'd like to change May 1st to a full day. So key dates remain the same, start date, end date remains the same. This switch is just merely switching three early release days to three full days.
So it's important to note that on those dates, parents would have already been planning to be in school because it was a two-hour early release, if they were planning to attend school at all. And so again, we don't bring this recommendation forward lightly. We met with all of our school principals to get feedback from them on whether we should even consider bringing this forward, given the feedback that we had gotten from parents in this calendar survey about early release days, and quite frankly, in looking at student achievement data and trying to ask why we had certain challenges, and we believe attendance is a root cause of some students' performance issues, and so we bring this forward tonight for your consideration.
Mr. Holland Schitt.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
So, Mrs., um, God, I'm getting brain dead.
Denny.
No, yes, Ms. Denny. So you actually changed a half day to full day, correct?
Early release day.
Early release day to a full day.
Yes, sir.
Okay, and therefore, the parents don't have to make an adjustment to pick the children up from school.
That's correct.
That's what I want to know. Thank you.
Any other? Mr. Grabowski.
I applaud the district for getting rid of early release. If there's anything I heard from my constituents over and over and over and over and over again, is get rid of these early release days. They're the most ridiculous thing that can ever happen. I mean, it just, it doesn't make any sense for kids to go to school for three, four hours, and it really is so hard. It is a hardship on so many members in my district, and I can't imagine how hard this is on other districts of working parents and throughout. I mean, early release is just, so I commend you for getting rid of it, and I think more school time is more important, so I'll be voting for this motion.
Ms. Roberson, is your hand up, or are you just-
No.
Okay, all right, all right. Any other?
I just have one clarifying question. The early, or the progress reports proceed in September, they proceed with a half day. Do I see, do I understand that not all progress reports proceed with a half day and the argument? Like, I don't understand the lack of consistency in progress reports.
Thanks, Ms. Lieber. So I just want to clarify that September 12th is currently proposed to be an early release day, not a half day. I just want to, it's a slight distinction, but want to make sure that I'm making that distinction for you. So really, the committee's charged with looking at grading periods and determining when our teachers, our faculty will have maximized planning around grading periods. And so there might not be, obviously, when you count report cards and progress reports, that's eight total grading periods throughout the year because there's four quarters, and each has an interim period. And so we do try to pair those early releases, or the half days, with a grading period, but no, you're right, it's not a one-to-one match for every single progress report or interim, or report card.
I guess because I'm not aware of what takes a progress report versus a report card, and knowing the needs of the teachers, it'd be important to somehow understand that distinction, especially visibly in future calendars, to understand what that means.
Absolutely. So the report card grade is your final report card, and that's what's used to calculate your GPA. Your progress report is provided to the parents about halfway through-
Yeah, I, my apologies.
No, go ahead.
I'm familiar with that, more as the effort needed by the teaching staff, why they would need a half day to do teacher planning for one or the other. So it's, my guess is the progress reports have more detail than the report card, because a report card is a systematic thing and-
I would say that varies by teacher.
We would probably think that the report cards actually warrant more work. The nine weeks where students end at the end of a quarter or at the end of the semester warrant more work and more planning on behalf of MTSS teams, IPS teams, individual problem solving, et cetera, for teachers, particularly as you think in high schools about semester-long classes and such. So we try to align as we can with that based on the needs of the district. And when we're planning on data conferences, so there are lots of different things that go on at different schools, but we think that more work goes around, you know, the nine-week grading period and the semester grading period than the interim period, Mrs. Lieber.
That's all I have.
Thank you for the questions.
May I ask one more question? May I ask one more question? So if that is the case, then why are we insisting on two shortened weeks back-to-back as opposed to making, or actually, three?
Which week? Who are you looking at, Ms. Jewett?
In September.
Yes, ma'am. Okay, thank you.
Your original calendar had three weeks back-to-back shortened, and that doesn't account for potential weather days.
Is that the 2025-26 or 26-27, Ms. Jewett?
25-26.
Okay, so-
Why would we put more emphasis on making sure that there's a planning time on the 12th than the 29th?
So I think in this iteration, we would make the 12th because it's an interim period. I think what Ms. Denny was saying is that we would transition the 12th from an early release to a full day. So you'd have Labor Day holiday on the 1st, a full day on the 12th, and the week of the 15th is when those interim reports go out, so it looks-
I think that would be great.
Yes.
But no, that's actually not what Ms. Denny is actually asking. She's asking for the 29th to be removed.
August 29th.
Okay, I have to go back myself and look, sorry.
Welcome to my world for the past three days.
Sorry, let me come down here and look, all right.
But then we really were okay with not giving them planning period in May.
So, Mrs. Jewett, if I may, the May report card does have a teacher work day on the 29th. So each of the report cards in the 25-26 revised calendar does have a work day near each final report card for each nine weeks.
Which also defends my point from the last calendar as well. That having, having it moved would not affect the teachers significantly, and it potentially could significantly affect the parents. The 12th is an early release day, or it's a-
So it's an early release day for teacher PD and planning because, you know, the original thinking was progress reports are that next week. And it's the middle of the, it's the middle of the very first quarter where so much is typically, as you know, going on, Dr. Temple, so that's-
It's a time of year where we need more consistency. We need more kids in classrooms for more consistent amounts of time.
So I think that's what the suggestion then, Mrs. Lieber, would be to make the 29th, which is just the second full week of kids, a full week, so it would go from making that. Maybe a half day originally to a full day, is that correct?
Yes, ma'am.
So then you'd have two full weeks, you know, a week with Labor Day, and then, you know, come back to school the next week with a day of PD versus having both the 29th and the 12th out for early release. I understand, we're all, I'm a parent too, so I know, I know, and we know where you're going.
It's also a teacher thing. Teachers, when they have to condense their schedule, even if it is a early release or whatever you want to call it, they still have to condense their schedule to a four-day schedule. They basically mark that day as not very constructive. So now you're asking the teachers to have a four-day week on the first week of September and a four-day week on the second week of September, and then skip two more weeks, three more, and then the third week, another interrupted.
So, but what this allows, Ms. Jewett, and I really appreciate your passion around this, and I know you care, and you're trying to advocate for people in your district and teachers, but, you know, it is important, we believe, to offer teachers an opportunity to connect and plan in the first month to month and a half of school. And if we reduce the 29th and make it a full day, the only time teachers would have to do that between the start of school and really October, I think, the 10th, it would be that September 12th on that two-hour early release.
I'm saying leave the early release on the 29th and take away the 12th.
We don't, we wouldn't recommend that, Mrs. Jewett, because children have just been in school like two and a half, two and a half weeks at that point. So it's almost like time you get started really well, and again, I know it's what we recommended originally, but-
Right, but they're going to get started, and then they're going to have a break, and then they're going to have another break, and then they're going to have two more weeks, and then another break. It's just as disruptive, if not more. Because this one is actually more impactful because you're closer to the end of the semester. If you look at the semester, it ends on the 13th. And so they only have two full weeks of school before the 13th.
Right, but the 12th, but the 12th is right before progress reports are distributed the next week, and then kids have the opportunity to be in school longer.
But wouldn't it be better to have them in school for three full weeks instead of two full weeks right before a report card comes out?
I see where you're going, but still find the value in the 12th versus the 29th, simply because of the timing of it. And again, it's just our recommendation, the board, if you want to leave the calendar as is and/or make the revisions, it's certainly up to you, but we think that the changes are more thoughtful to change the 29th to a full day than it would be to the 12th, given the timing of progress reports the next week. Then the 10th is the end of the quarter, and a half day in October, Mrs. Jewett, as you've noted. Again, we don't take this personally. In fact, we appreciate your advocacy, and we're certainly open to a board member, to board members providing us feedback.
You need to be aware that this is our highest, you know, when it's, when we live in Minnesota, you do think, oh, in January, we probably shouldn't add in extra weeks of less instruction.
Yes, ma'am.
January, we might have a snowstorm.
It's going to be cold, yeah.
Yeah. Here, that's not our concern. Our concern is hurricanes, and hurricanes hit us in September and October. So what we are doing is intentionally creating a week per semester where kids are not in instructional time for long periods of time at all for half of the semester. And it would have been even more if we didn't take one away. And it was the same concern in the future calendar.
It would have been, and I hear you, but on the event that, like Ms. McKinney said, we don't have any hurricane days, which, you know, is-
Well, and I might interject, we had snow days and ice days. So we just, we have to operate around instruction. We just can't control the weather.
If we don't plan for something in that month-
No, that-
If we don't plan for something in that month, and then, and even when you're out, we do want to give teachers some opportunity to plan in the first month of their time with students, or the first month and a half, as you onboard kids, so-
Especially, for example, with the new math curriculum. They're going to need that time to collaborate and evaluate.
And they still get it on the 29th.
We just would suggest that it's too close to the start, but we, you'll do you-
So we'll call for the question. The amendment. Ms. Bowles, if you can bring that up. And Ms. Jewett, if you will check that it reads the way your amendment was stated.
Seven to five? I thought we were getting to four. I thought we were going for a calendar that's have-
Well, I said that, I said that I think they should leave the May 5th in the current calendar because, or the May 1st date. Because May 1st is the only day between spring break and the last day of school that basically they have to plan.
So Ms. Jewett, does the motion for the amendment read the way you stated it? All right, cast your votes.
I will, I'm not okay. You guys, you guys, I hope you see, I hope you guys get the wrath of your constituents. This was an approved calendar. I haven't had any more time.
I guess I'm confused. I thought we were-
You're taking my parents.
We were trying to get a calendar that has only four early-
Have all the votes been cast, Ms. Bowles?
Yes, ma'am.
I'm sorry, I just don't understand this.
The amendment?
Yeah, I thought we were trying to get to a calendar for 25-26 that has a reduced number of early release days, and I thought we were trying to get it, so we just had four.
Yes, ma'am. In the second emotion you'll vote on, it'll get it to four. I think this one gets it to five, isn't that right, Mrs. Jewett? This one gets it down to five, Mrs.-
Yeah, because this is an approved, published calendar, and I'm scared that our constituents might actually get upset, and our teachers might actually get upset if they get all of their workdays taken away because our teachers are requesting to have their workdays, which we've stated multiple times throughout this. May 1st. May 1st is the only day between April 10th and May 25th.
Madam Chairman. While voting is taking place, we're not supposed to be having discussions. There's just a lot of it going on.
And the motion fails. We will call for the amendment, the vote on the amendment fails. So we will call for the vote on the original motion.
I hope we get lots of hurricanes. I hope so. I hope you guys get lots of hurricanes.
You need a workshop on this.
Yeah. Mark my words, September. Lots of hurricanes.
And May 1st, okay.
And the motion passes.
Madam Chair.
Yes, sir.
I do want to say this to Mr. Nita. I just happened to think back, and some six years ago, when we did deal with the calendar, we did have parents, and people come in and complain about the calendar. So I don't know if they don't care anymore. We're, we're not communicating with them, we're doing what we want. But I just have to think back, we did have people lining up there about that calendar back then.
So I'll be honest, Mr. Hollinshead, Mr. Denny has revamped the whole process in how we adopt calendar iterations. She's been working on this for how many, how many months have you been working on this?
Since February.
So we've been working on, so we've been working, so, so we've been working on this since February, and there are how many members of the calendar committee?
Twenty-one.
Twenty-one members, which includes activists, parents, educators, principals. And so we've changed the whole process for how we do it, and we don't get that many complaints. Um, and we understand there have been a lot of frustrations with e-learning this year. We're equally as frustrated, and, and we're working with our principals to make sure that we're serving families well.
Um, Ms. Bowles, if you will confirm with me, we are on item 7C now, uh, with a motion to advance the unanimously voted items to the, um, potential consent agenda.
Correct. Want to make the motion?
Six A, six B, six C, six D, nine E were all unanimous. So, Mr. Hollinshead, did I hear you say make a motion to move in the consent? Is there a second?
A second.
All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We have an upcoming, um, Board of Trustees meeting on June 23rd. Is there a motion to adjourn so that we then may have the special called meeting for this evening?
I motion, I second.
All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Any opposed?
It's not letting...
We are in, all in favor say aye. We are back into.
Open session.
Open session. Regarding the review, the question for the board is a personnel matter for the procurement review panel. I would like to make a motion to appoint Ms. Pam McKinley to the board.
Second.
Do I have any other individuals elect to make a motion? Hearing none, I'd like to bring it up to vote. And Ms. McKinney is now on this wonderful panel for the next year. I hope you enjoy your time.
Be shorter than my Cal meetings.
And Mr. Prentice, as I understand it, all other representatives have to get you your appointees within the next week.
That would be preferable, Mr. Grabowski, you, Ms. Bailey. Mr. Prentice will make an appointment, so will I. So if you could get them to us within the next week.
They just need to know that they need to be available sometime before July 15th and then on the 15th at 10 o'clock in the morning here at Calhoun.
Yes, sir. And if you just email the information to me, I'll have Tanisha in my office compile everything and we'll send out instruction from there.
Excellent. Next is a motion to approve the proposed constitutionally board policy resolution. Do I have a second motion?
I move to approve the proposed resolution.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion? As I understand it, we will vote on this. If it passes, then I am required to read the resolution into the public record. I would like to bring it up for vote. All in favor say aye.
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 Any oppose? Hearing none. The motion passes and I will read the resolution.
Here.
Do you have it? This is the resolution of the Charleston County School District Board of Trustees regarding Act 77 of 2025, an act to abolish the constituent districts of Charleston County School District and their respective Board of Trustees. Whereas the General Assembly of South Carolina enacted on April 28, 2025, the Governor of South Carolina signed into law R-23H4014, now known as Act 77 of 2025, which abolishes the constituent districts of Charleston County School District and their respective Board of Trustees. And whereas this new law takes effect July 1, 2025, and whereas the policies of Charleston County School District are in the process of being updated to reflect the new law, but will not receive a second reading by July 1, 2025, and whereas the new law supersedes policies and will be observed by the Charleston County School District effective July 1, 2025, while the policy continued to be updated and now therefore be resolved, this resolution will continue to be in effect until the Board of Trustees takes final action to approve its policies abolishing the constituent districts of the Charleston County School District adopted this 9th day of June, 2025. Excellent. Do I have a motion to adjourn the meeting?
It's moved.
All in favor? Please leave.